...for the free summer lunch program. The goal of the program is to ensure children receive at least one nutritious and balanced meal per day, even when school is not in session. No registration or sign up is required. The lunch program is funded by the United States Department of Agriculture. To find the lunch site nearest you, call 818-546-2383, or visit laparks.org/foodprogram. Hollywood stars took a break from movie making to spruce up a community center. Gil Reyes reports from the kickoff of the Bing Summer of Doing event.
No, I mean, where do I put the excess soil?
Hollywood actresses Phoebe Tonkin and Teresa Palmer may be used to preening, but pruning, well, that's something new. They and other stars showing their home and gardening skills at the kickoff of Bing's Summer of Doing event. Bing, the search engine for Microsoft teamed up with the group DoSomething.org. With the help of volunteers, they spruced up Heart of Los Angeles, or Ola. That's the Community Center for At-Risk Youth at Lafayette Park.
It's cool. It's a cool place for them to come hang out and feel nurtured and cared for and be able to express themselves creatively.
The cleanup gave young people something constructive to do while school's out, while giving back to their community.
They need volunteers, they need caring organizations, they need recreation centers to get behind these kids to make sure they don't fall between the cracks.
Volunteers also restored the rec room and painted two new murals, all in a day's work while sowing the seeds for a better community. In the Westlake District, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Lafayette Recreation Center provides thousands of underserved kids with free after-school programs in academics, arts, and athletics. And in this week's list of things to do, Making Your Own Japanese Noodles, a film festival all about dance, and a car show at the Port of LA waterfront to help kick off the summer. Museums aren't just for browsing. For a hands-on experience, head over to the Japanese American National Museum on Saturday, June 30th, to learn how to make your own soba entirely by hand using fresh, stone-milled, artisanal soba flour from Japan and authentic soba tools. The class goes from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And at the end of it all, you get to taste the soba you made, served in the classic way, cold with fresh soy-based dipping sauce, toppings, and spices. RSVP early as the class only takes 12 people. The Japanese American National Museum is located at 100 North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo. For cost and to RSVP, go to janm.org. Do you like dance? And how about films? Well, put them both together and you've got the 11th Annual Dance Media Film Festival presented by Dance Camera West. The festival will screen thought-provoking dance films from around the world. The three-day festival takes place from Thursday, June 28th to Saturday, June 30th at LACMA, with one event hosted by the Hammer Museum. LACMA is located at 5905 Wolsher Boulevard. Go to danc camera west dot org for a schedule of events. And there is a whole heck of a lot going on at the Port of Los Angeles waterfront this summer, including a new battleship, the return of fireworks, concerts, and festivals. The first to kick off the summer is the popular premiere classic car show Cars and Stripes Forever, on Friday, June 29th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Fan Fair Fountain, located at Harbor Boulevard and Swinford Street in San Pedro. Like past years, this year's car show will feature hundreds of classic cars and motorcycles, live music, spectacular fountain shows, food trucks, and a beer garden. More info on this free event can be found at portoflos angeles.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. An LA institution just celebrated its 65th anniversary by throwing a huge party for the community, but instead of serving cake, on the menu was its signature sandwich. Anna Marcos takes us to Langer's Deli.
This famous LA landmark is celebrating its 65th birthday with a round of sandwiches on the house. Langer's Deli is serving up its famous Number 19, the hot pastrami sandwich that helped put it on the map, way back when Mr. Langer, the present owner's father, opened shop in 1947.
It's awesome. It's the best sandwich in LA.
It might be the best pastrami in the country.
Matters not what you charge, but don't change the product. Same quality, same quantity. And that's something that I provide to all of my customers.
How many sandwiches do you think you're gonna want to give away today?
It's difficult to know how many, but I've got enough. Five, eight thousand, eight thousand.
I'm tired, I'm chewing. My jaws got tired.
So much food.
Oh, Jesus, it's beautiful. I've been here since I was a kid.
The LAPD, a vital partner to businesses in this area of Rampart, is also celebrating and chowing down. And they've brought along young members of the Police Cadet Program to help recruit new members.
This is a community event. As you can see, the outpouring from the community, and it's a good opportunity for us to kind of interact with the community and let them know what programs we also have available for the youth in the area here.
If you missed the 65th anniversary bash, not to worry. We get a feeling the Number 19 hot pastrami will be on the menu for a long time. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on the LAPD's Cadet Program, visit lapcadets.com. The next Cadet Training Academy begins August 4th. And for a taste of Langer's pastrami sandwich, head on over to 704 South Alvarado Street. Young Angelinos recently showcased their talent at a school concert with bells on, literally. Rasha Goel introduces us to the Twain School Bell Ringers, who will soon perform on an even bigger stage, the World Stage at the London Olympics.
Bell ringers from Mark Twain Middle School rang in the tunes at their 2012 Spring Concert. And this summer, they will be charming the world with their talent when they represent California at the Summer Olympics in London.
We're the only ones, I believe, from California or the West Coast. Most bell ringers in the world are over 50 years of age, but our bell ringers are 12 and 13, and they'll be the youngest bell ringers in London, probably.
It's changed. It's a life-changing experience. It'll be fun.
But it almost didn't happen.
We needed to raise $107,200 to send our bell ringers to London because they were invited to perform this year four concerts during a 10-day period at the 2012 Summer Olympics in London.
And thanks to Councilmember Bill Rosendahl from the 11th District, these kids had the money to enable them to showcase their talent to the world.
I got so excited when I heard about it, and I know that Rex needed 30 grand, that we pushed a few buttons, made a few people, this and that, we were able to bring in $30,000 more.
While bell ringing is commonly done in churches with salutary songs, these students will be bringing a modern feel to their music.
They'll be using that, songs from Katy Perry, and Adele, and Taylor Swift.
The scars of you all remind me of us, they keep me thinking that we almost had it all. The sound of music taking these kids across an ocean for an experience of a lifetime. From Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. It is Wednesday, June 27th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. The council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Members of the public are welcome. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but Mr. Garcetti, it's my understanding you're ready with your presentation. So, Mr. Garcetti, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask Zoe Nicholson to join me and Lindsey Horvath up here for a very special presentation we have here today. This weekend will be the 30th anniversary of the day that the Equal Rights Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unfortunately failed to meet the legislative deadline for ratification. As many folks know, through history, this nation's struggle to achieve equality for all, regardless of race, religion, gender, has been part of our nation's story. And the Equal Rights Amendment intent was a turning point for our country. Its intent simply was to provide women with equal protection under our Constitution. No special protection, but equal protection. And just as a reminder of how simple it was, I'm gonna read the complete text. One, equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. Two, the Congress shall have the power to enforce by appropriate legislation the provisions of this article. And three, this amendment shall take effect two years after the date of ratification. That's it. And yet, the ERA failed to win ratification from the 38 states needed, missing the mark by just three states. Thirty-five states stood up, did the necessary legislative work to move it forward, but we fell three states short. Laws protecting women certainly have advanced in the last 30 years. In fact, 22 states, including California, have passed their own equal rights amendments. But by no means does that indicate that women do not need or deserve federal constitutional protection. In fact, this year alone, members of Congress have introduced dozens of bills, and state legislators around the country have introduced hundreds of measures that impact women's access to health care services. Alice Paul, who is one of the leaders in the fight for women's right to vote, once said, "There will never be a new world order until women are a part of it." This 30th anniversary should remind us of how much more work we need to do, how much harder we need to work to achieve that goal. And I want to thank Zoe Nicholson, who is the founder of ERA Once and For All. She is an extraordinary leader in her own right, lives here in the Southland. In 1982, she was one of seven women who fasted for 37 days to draw attention to state legislatures that were voting on the amendment's ratification. And she has certainly been a champion. I'd like to present the certificate of recognition to her in recognition of her steadfast dedication to ensuring that equal rights for women and all Americans are protected in the United States Constitution once and for all. Please give her a round of applause in this commemoration, and we'll hear some words from her too. Zoe Nicholson.
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words.
Yes, good morning. You know, this country of ours has moved in the right direction on rights for women. Frankly, there are five open seats in the council, there's three incumbents running for reelection. I hope that we have some women around the horse here, because frankly, together, men and women can make the world a better place, and it shouldn't be just one sex or the other. But together, that's the strength. That's why I'm so proud of our police department, that has dramatically improved the number of women officers. So whatever we do, it sets a tone for the rest of the world. We see countries like Egypt right now and other countries going through a political upheaval. And I always look at what does it mean to women, what does it mean to gay people, and where are the basic human and civil rights? I just want to acknowledge you and bless you for your leadership, and the more democracy we have, the better off we all are. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti, back to you.
Very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Garcetti, and the Los Angeles City Council for this moment. Thank you for inviting me to speak here, celebrating 30 years of the Equal Rights Amendment being a component of my life, if not the pillar. While our military travels to the Middle East and other countries to make sure that women are in foreign constitutions, we have yet to do it here in America. You may find it surprising to know that 96% of Americans believe that men and women should be in the Constitution, and 72% actually believe the Equal Rights Amendment passed, which is, in fact, the greatest obstacle to passing it, because most people think it did, and in fact, who can blame them? It seems reasonable at the least. I am often asked what we can do about the Equal Rights Amendment, and I tell them two simple things. One, tell everyone you know that it didn't pass. And two, live as if it did. Thank you so much for the honor of speaking today. I'm so proud to be here at the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Thank you very much.
Congratulations to you.
And we did, just as a matter of law here, pass also something at the international level that hadn't been ratified, the Convention on Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. We led the charge before I was a council member, was part of that working task force to make sure that even while sometimes national and international bodies fail to recognize equal rights, we are not powerless to do so here. I think I just ruined the surprise, but I also want to thank I think I just ruined the surprise, but I also want to thank and have come forward Lindsay Horvath, who many of you know, most recently as a commissioner in our school redistricting, great city councilwoman when she was on the city council of West Hollywood, our neighbor, and someone who was born just as the ERA, the Equal Rights Amendment, was being decided upon. She is a baby from that moment. And the legacy, 30 years later, it is her 30th birthday, and so on behalf of the mayor and myself, we wanted to give her this. She's now the president also of Hollywood Now, and ask her to say a few words on behalf of the National Organization for Women too. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Eric Garcetti has been stalwart champion for our Hollywood chapter of NOW and for women throughout Los Angeles and beyond. We're very grateful for the work that he's done, and I know that women are always at the forefront of everything that he does. We see the effects every day in the city of Los Angeles and beyond of the reality that the ERA was not ratified here in the United States. Whether it's fighting for the testing of a backlog of untested rape kit evidence, whether it's advocating for more women in leadership positions, as Councilmember Rosendahl said, seeing more women around the horseshoe, or seeing women in entertainment leadership positions, all of the areas of our community that we need to see women advance. And so, I thank you today for considering your commitment to advancing the ERA. I thank you for considering your commitment to making sure that women are free and safe from all forms of violence. And I thank you for your consideration today to think about what you can do to put women at the forefront of everything you do here in Los Angeles. I was born June 30, 1982, and so this deadline has a significant impact to me. It marks definitively a lifetime without equality in the Constitution. And I will work hard to make sure that that equality is constitutionally protected, and I hope you will join me and all of us in this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, I believe we do have a quorum. If you would please call a roll.
Alarcon Buscaino-Cardenas, Englander Garcetti, Weezer Karetz, Krikorian Labanche-Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendahl Zine Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Krikorian moves, Weezer seconds, next.
Mr. President, commendatory resolutions for approval.
Cardenas moves, Zine second. So that, members, I'd like to at this time direct your attention to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, we should prepare to go through it.
Very good, sir.
Starting with the first set of items, if you could please read items, or not read, but go through items one through four.
Very good, sir. Items one through four, items noticed for public hearing.
Any cards?
No, sir.
Members? Specials? Okay, on this item, one through four, on these items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. President, those will go over to, for second reading, to council's First Day Act from recess, which is July 24, unless reconsidered at a later time, this meeting with 12 members.
Hopefully, we'll have another member present, and we can reconsider those items at that time. So now, that brings us to items five through 14.
That is correct, sir. Items five through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items five and 12 have been submitted and are circulated for the members' review. And on item six, for clarification, this is a second reading ordinance, which approved Board Order 12-7105, not 12-1705, which was a typographical error, and approved the license agreement and fee schedule for commercial use of Harvard Department photographs, which was adopted last week by council through motion 8A.
Okay, members, specials, Mr. Zine.
Five and nine.
Mr. Zine holds items five and nine. Other specials, members? Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Items 15 through 27 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. For item 17, a motion is required.
Okay, without objection, those orders, I mean, those items are now before us. Ms. Perry?
Item 17.
Ms. Perry, item 17. Mr. Buscaino?
Item 23, sir, for Mr. Garcetti.
Any other specials? Mr. Karetz?
To call item 26 special and ask that item 27 be continued to August 1.
Okay, 26 special for Mr. Karetz, and a request to continue item 27. Without objection. In fact, Mr. Clerk, do you want to read into the record the date, Mr. Karetz's date?
I believe that was August 1, sir.
Mr. Karetz?
Yes, and previously, I believe that item 12 should have been called special. I'm sure there are cards in.
Which? I didn't hear you.
Item 12?
It was not called special.
Are there not cards in for that one?
It's my understanding that the public hearing has been satisfied on those items, on that item, item 12. Okay, now, on the remaining items, do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 17, 19, 21, and 26. 17, 19, 21, and 26.
Okay, Mr. Karetz? I thought I saw you with your hand up.
Just give me one more moment. I may call something, ask that something be recalled, but give me a moment.
Okay, on the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
Item 28 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
I'd like to check with the Chair of Budget and Finance.
Can we hold it on the desk for now, Mr. President?
Okay, so we will hold 28. I'd like to go into the special meeting, and we have two items in the special meeting, 29, I believe, and 30.
Mr. President, that is correct. Alarcon Buscaino, so we will recess the regular and go into the special. Alarcon Buscaino-Cardenas, Englander Garcetti, Weezer Karetz, Krikorian Labanche-Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendahl Zine Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, on items 29 and 30, Mr. Weezer, would you like to?
Number 30, 30 special, please.
Mr. President, item 29 is an item noticed for, excuse me, for public hearing. We currently do not have any cards in on that matter.
Okay, so on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, at this point, are there cards on item 30?
Mr. President, I do believe we have cards. If I'm not mistaken, it is a committee report, and public hearing was satisfied during committee's consideration of this matter.
Okay, so then, Mr. Weezer, we're on item 30?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and what's before us is a report from Budget and Finance relative to the...
Hold it on the desk for five minutes, please.
Do you have anything else on the special agenda?
This is the last item.
This is the last item? Okay. Let me do a verbal amendment to this, please, which is an item... Well, first, let me begin by saying this is a report relative to actions to establish a community facilities district for the downtown Los Angeles streetcar project. As many of you know, many of us in downtown Los Angeles has been working to bring back our beloved streetcar. When we see what's happened in Portland and Seattle, it's not only a great environmentally safe transportation system, but it's a great economic development driver to revitalize older communities. And with us today is a step that, in a multi-step process, that will require numerous council actions, but this is one that will get us to start off the project by asking our city staff to begin the process to establish a facilities, a community benefits district. No project is perfect. No single streetcar line can serve 100% of residents, but what we've come up with in a number of meetings throughout the last couple of years is something I think that will establish, to kick off once again, our beloved streetcar, when we know we all loved our streetcar once it would flow through all parts of Los Angeles. Correct, Mr. Garcetti? It went to Bow Heights. It was all the way to the ocean. And we believe that once this is established, it's going to want to even get other routes as well. But I do have an amended motion that I will move and seconded by the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, Paul Krikorian, and it reads, "I would move that the council amend the Budget and Finance Committee report related to the creation of Community Facilities District Number Nine, CF 11-0329-S6, and item number 30 on the special agenda to modify recommendation number two to read as follows. Adopt the attached resolution to incur bonded indebtedness of the proposed community facilities district number nine, parentheses, downtown streetcar, attachment B, as amended to change the requirement of an operational plan for a minimum period of 20 years to 30 years." And, Mr. Krikorian, if you want to second that?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll second that, and just as a technical matter for the record, the committee report actually already provided for the amendment that Mr. Weezer just described. The agenda did not. So, for clarity, that's already contained in the committee report, and so we can approve the recommendations as they're contained in the report.
Could you state that again, Mr. Krikorian? Is this already in the committee report?
Yes. The change that Mr. Weezer just described is contained in recommendation two in the committee report, but it is not reflected on the special meeting agenda, which is why Mr. Weezer wanted to, and I both wanted to, make sure that that was stated for the record. But the change in the operational plan will be extended for a minimum period of change from 20 years to 30 years, and that is as reflected in the report.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, so does that still satisfy the hearing requirement?
Since there has not been a substantial change since this matter was in committee, then a public hearing would not have to be reopened.
Okay, so with that, back to you, Mr. Weezer.
President, I'd like to ask your a vote on this. This is a first step, and many steps that need to happen, and I know there's some speakers came to speak today in support of the project, and thank you for coming out today. The hearing was held in the committee, and so we're moving forward today without a hearing here, but thank you for coming out today.
Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Fourth with. Thank you.
Fourth with. Mr. Clerk, let's now return to the regular scheduled.
Very, very good, sir. We will adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular. Mr. President, still before you is item 31. That item 31 was from the continuation agenda. It's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Any specials on 31? Mr. Zine? Mr. Zine? Okay, Mr. Reyes, are you ready for your... All right, we'll call on you later. Okay, with that said, that brings us to Mr. Garcetti?
Would you mind if we take the reward motion out of order, item 23?
We can do that right now.
Okay. 23? 23.
23. We can do that right now, and it's my understanding, Mr. Buscaino is gonna, you have a...
Yeah, just following, he has a video to play as well, but colleagues, I ask your support. Many of us saw on May 24 the footage in Echo Park of the stabbing of two young men. This is a call today not only to pass the reward motion, but a call to action to launch a zero tolerance for hate crimes here in Los Angeles. LAPD characterized this stabbing on March 24, which happened on Echo Park Avenue near Montana, as a hate crime based on sexual orientation. Two young men, who are longtime Echo Park residents, were attacked and stabbed after the perpetrators yelled anti-gay slurs at them because they had a rainbow flag on their bicycle. We need to capture these perpetrators of hate and take a stand of zero tolerance against any hate crime. And it is appropriate for the city of Los Angeles to offer a $25,000 reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person or persons responsible for this heinous crime. By your yes vote today, we stand with the Echo Park community, we stand with our LGBT community, and we stand with all Angelenos in saying that a perceived difference, whether it be your skin color, be it who you love, be it where you're from, be it how you worship God, or the language you speak, is never a reason for an attack. There is no reason for an attack like this, but it is doubly vicious when it comes out of the blue because of this perception. A crime against any member of our community is a crime against all of us, and I hope that today you will stand with me. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Joe Buscaino, who's been working with high school students to not only speak out about hate crimes and discrimination and hatred that is out there, but to do something about it, and they've produced, I know, some work that I'm very pleased that he has before us today to be able to show, that was inspired by what happened in Echo Park. So I'll queue it up and turn it over to Councilmember Buscaino with my deepest thanks and my desire for you all to please make sure we get a yes vote unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for bringing this forward to the city council, and thanks for your leadership on this. Obviously, I will stand and support this reward motion. Completely breaks my heart to hear what happened in Echo Park. And I'll quote the great Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "We must meet the forces of hate with the power of love." And to know that I've worked with teenagers, as Mr. Garcetti alluded to, who day in, day out, have addressed some of these social issues when it comes to hate crimes. We put together a public service announcement that I want to thank, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. President, thank you for allowing us to share this, but how fitting it is to raise awareness on hate crimes. And I've seen crime reports come through my desk as a senior lead officer, to the point where I reached out to the teen community to be vocal and include the teens in the problem-solving process. So with that, I'd like to ask Channel 35 to queue up the video.
Okay, let's go.
...targeting a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair. They better than well. We begin with an Iowa Witness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury, even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
The suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for prison offense.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes.
Yes, Mr. Garcetti?
President, thank you, Mr. Buscaino. I asked for an i-vote. Thank you.
Okay, on this item, can we open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, at this time, forthwith, Mr. Corretts.
Yes, I know that Item 12 has already been voted on, and...
Well, I'm going to get back to you right, I need to take an action right now while we have 12 members.
Okay.
Soon as we do that, I'll call you back. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have several items that we voted on that were ordinances, but we didn't have the 12 votes required. So at this point, if you could identify the ordinances, I'll ask for reconsideration, and we can vote on them when we have the 12 members required.
Very good, sir. Those ordinances, not called special, are Items 1 through 4, 15, and 16. Again, 1 through 4, 15, and 16.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, members, this first vote is on reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. The next vote will be on the actual ordinance, ordinances. So, members, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Corretts, now back to you that that's taken care of.
Yes, although I already voted on Item Number 12 because of the number of people that are here to hear the item and the great community interest that it has had, although the public hearing requirement was satisfied in committee, I'd like to ask that we have an open opportunity for a second public hearing and discussion in council.
Okay, generally, you know that is not the way we operate.
I did know that.
But in order to be sensitive to the people that have come, I'll give you, why don't we start out, we have 10 minutes for, 10 minutes against. We do have what I believe is a minor problem. Quite possibly, some of the individuals who filled out cards to speak did not submit them on Item 12. So there may be some, so if you're here and you did not identify what item you wanted to speak to and just filled out a general public comment card, I won't call you on that item, so you need to do it, give me a card on 12, or I'll work with you as we're going through this to see if we can't get as many people an opportunity to speak as possible. But we want to start with general public comment, though, Mr. Corretts, okay? Oh, well, so on Item 12, let's vote, we're going to vote for reconsideration to place it back on the agenda. So on Item 12, members, we're voting on reconsideration. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, so that item is now back on our docket. I want to start off with general public comment. So Lucy Caruso, if you'd please come forward. Daniel Sosa. Wallace Johnson. I called three names. I'd like to see three people. Yes, Ms. Caruso.
Yeah, I want to know, like, instead of progressing, we're regressing a little bit. I'll tell you what happened yesterday, although I wanted to talk about this other stuff, I wanted to say what happened to me yesterday. My parents used to have a restaurant, I'm talking fast because of the time, and the importance of servers, you know, on a proximity, you have somebody seated, you're standing in this proximity in terms of hygiene. So yesterday, that in mind, I wanted to get on a bus to go to LA Free Clinic, but first I needed to freshen up, so to speak, and I go, "Well, let me go to a park because that would be probably the best place real quick," and get my pants, and then carry on. Well, I go to the park, and then they say, "You can't use children," that's why I'm saying, "Children are there. You can't use the restroom." Go to the, and they're always accommodating, so to speak, but they always lack these rest- what, do you think I am a rapist or something? I mean, if I go to a restaurant, or if I'm going to a hotel, or wherever public is, they're not going to say, "Well, there's kids here, you can't go to the bathroom." Well, anyway, there's the porta potty, and there's a large one, that's mine with me. But then you get this insistent knocking on the door, "Get out of this bathroom." I don't understand this. What I want to get over here back to is this same-sex marriage stuff and the wording of this stuff, and I want to bring this point out, maybe this could help you out a bit. And I'm in limited time, so pardon me. It says this Supreme Court, and I don't know how to pronounce these names, ruled denying women disability benefits for pregnancy was not sex discrimination. The rationale was that the difference between pregnant and non-pregnant people, not men and women. So then it goes, I don't even have time to finish this. This and similar decisions led to some Pregnancy Discrimination Act of 1978. Where does that Defense of Marriage Act fit in with that? I only have two minutes, I got to go. I'll finish the rest later.
Thank you. Daniel Sosa. Wallace Johnson. Arnold Sacks.
Greetings, Council. I'm going to quote the Compassionate Use Act of 1996. This section shall be known, may be cited as the Compassionate Use Act of 1996. The people of the State of California hereby find and declare that the purposes of the Compassionate Use Act of 1996 are as follows: To ensure that seriously ill Californians have the right to obtain and use medical marijuana for medical purposes where that medical use is deemed appropriate and has been recommended by a physician, who has determined that that person's health would benefit from the use of marijuana in the treatment of cancer, anorexia, AIDS, chronic pain, spasticity, glaucoma, arthritis, migraines, or any other illness for which marijuana provides relief. Any other illness for which marijuana provides relief. To encourage the federal and state governments to implement a plan to provide for the safe and affordable distribution of marijuana to all patients in medical need of marijuana. I'm going to say that one again. To encourage the federal and state governments to implement a plan to provide for the safe and affordable distribution of marijuana to all patients, all patients in medical need of marijuana. This was passed by the people in 1996, 16 years ago. I really urge that you guys take these medical marijuana bans off the agenda completely. Neither of these proposed bans would be good laws. They're totally, totally backwards. It's totally opposite of what the people are demanding. We're a community of people who want safe, affordable access to the medicine we choose. It's simple. It's fundamental. Please, help us, help us get that safe access we're demanding. Thank you.
Mr. Wallace.
Good morning.
Wallace Johnson, I'm sorry.
Yes, good morning.
Go ahead, sir. Good to see you again.
Thank you. 13 years ago, I was dying of nosebleeds, four T cells, and thank God they did have medication to take care of me, and it kept me working until about 2006. But in the meantime, as I was taking the medications, I couldn't keep them down. And I had to find some way, they tried to find all kind of medications for me to take, but then my doctor recommended me trying medical cannabis. When I started taking it, it started holding my medications down to where I can eat. I gained weight, and then I kind of lost weight because I had to stop because of the laws. And now that we have a place to go to relax and take our medications, I feel a lot better. My strength is stronger. I'm just trying to say, the best thing to do is to try to keep them open. We need to keep these places open, because if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be standing here today telling you these things 13 years later. I should have been gone already. I shouldn't even be here, but I'm here now to tell you, you know, it works. And without that, a lot of people wouldn't have made it without the medications. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, followed by Stephen Parks.
Yes, thank you.
Followed by Charles.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Has a fascinating introduction to this meeting this morning with Councilman Corretts asking for a reconsideration on an item that had already been held in committee. Because last week, when Councilwoman Perry and Parks asked for reconsideration on the redistricting voting, that was shot down. So you have to still vote on whether you're going to reopen the public hearing. You just voted to put it back on the agenda. I'm interested to find out how that'll work out and to see how prejudicial you are with regards to the districts that Perry and Parks represent in your vote versus the district that Councilman Corretts represents in his. That being said, there was an item on your agenda today, because there was an item yesterday on your agenda, Item Number Eight, that also had been heard in public in committee, yet you allowed public comment. So that I put a card on Item Number Eight, which is referring to the CRA. And this document from the Downtown News that was dated 5/28/12 says that the designation, the CRA slash LA is the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency, yet it's listed on this agenda as the original agency. So you're only talking about like $600 million with the CRA, yet you changed the designations back and forth like they're all one big happy family. That being said, tomorrow MTA is going to consider Measure R, the extension of Measure R. You know, I picked this up on June 1st. This was hanging in the City Council. Mayor and council working room on Measure R. I asked three times when the next meeting is. Nobody knows. Where's the agenda? Nobody knows. You want to extend, the mayor wants to extend Measure R, but nobody knows what the hell's going on. That's leadership.
Okay, Mr. Parks, followed by Charles, followed by Henry Marine.
Good morning, Council. My name's Stephen Parks. I'm a U.S. Military Army veteran. I've been in this state for five years. I've been a medical marijuana patient for that duration. I came to this state for that purpose because when I was injured in the military, there was prescribed OxyContin, Ibuprofen, and other addictive pills that made me lose weight, gave me anxiety, and different, I would say, mental setbacks. And since I've been in this great state of California, I've been able to have safe access to medical marijuana, and it has safely and productively made me a better citizen of this country, and I just want to be able to still have my safe access. Thank you.
No, thank you. Charles, followed by Henry Marine, and then we'll go to the Valley for Marian Fogler and Sharon Brewer. Charles.
Good morning, Council. How you guys doing?
Good.
I'm here to have a word with you. I'd just like to say that, oh, I'd like to comment on the article that I provided with you guys yesterday. It was written by a criminal defense attorney who's been doing MMJ work for the past 10 years, and he provides a very interesting outlook on where we are today with the MMJ issue in the City of Los Angeles. I'd like to say that the State of California is going to come out with its guidelines, you know, regardless of the council's legislation due to what's going on in Long Beach. No matter how it plays out, the state will provide further guidelines towards how the city can regulate dispensaries. Have a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Marine, followed by Marian Fogler and Sharon Brewer.
Good morning.
Hey.
Yesterday, you discovered how much you could learn about politics, economics, and discrimination from a person who learned, who rode in the back of a New Orleans bus. And I've been coming here all the time, showing you what's shown in black and white about how much money the city withheld from the pay of others than me and failed and refused to account for. Now, if you don't want to account for the fruits of our labor, you ain't supposed to put your hands on our daily bread in the first place. MOU 3562 and Hackla MOUs show how much money politicians decided to put on the percent they wanted to take from my daily bread in the first place. Now, when you going to turn it back? That was in the past tense, and in the present tense, you're going to keep it on an ongoing basis, and in the future tense, you got to turn it over to Hackla, or, I mean, to Lasers or Pers, or pay those employees you deferred the money from in the first place. Now, you know, all these figures of speech created by oxymorons are only supposed to be believed by morons. So when you all going to step up to the plate, you got to stand for something or fall for anything. Bye.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next group of speakers are coming from Van Nuys. We have Marian Fogler, Sharon Brewer, and Michael Mong. Please come to the microphone from Van Nuys.
Yeah, I want to let you know that we have somebody who came down here, so you can't just shut this off, shutting off the San Fernando Valley, because the people, come on, make your calls. Reach out and tell them that you don't want to shut this off. You want people, you can come down here, fill out your cards. All right? You know, we can go into a small room. You don't need to show all these chairs. And then top of that, you, I'd like to know who did this cost analysis with the CIO, our place, but not doing your place. I'd like to know that information, and I want to know what will it take to keep the communication open from the San Fernando Valley down to your City Hall downtown, because I feel like I'm being forced down there with my asthma, and I just had someone that just died from the asthma, okay, like two, three weeks ago. This is not a joke. It's not funny. And I talked, you know, I spoke to Mr. Rosenthal, and you people don't want to budge. You don't even have open hearts, no humanity. You have no dignity, no feeling for a human being, that have to travel two hours. What kind of city do we have here that politicians close the doors on the residents of the San Fernando Valley and stop them from having their succession, having their own city, so that we can have our leaders right here? You ignore us anyway when we come down here. You don't even do nothing for, you don't listen to us. Nobody. You don't, you don't care about your constituents. All you care about is collecting your money and spending it and keeping it for yourselves, and you have your cars and your perks and everything else. How much does it cost? I want to know what it takes to keep this open. I demand to know who.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Public comment. Councilman Zine, I was wondering if you could look into the car wash at Bessemer and Receta Boulevard by the orange line and what can be done about the property. Yesterday, I noticed a side window that has been broken out, glasses all over the ground, graffiti on the back walls. Property has been vacant for over a year. The window still has not been boarded up, and as of this morning, so maybe you can take and look at that again, Bessemer and Receta Boulevard. I have some concerns regarding Dunn Neighborhood Council funding report webpage. It needs to be updated immediately. The last entries were April 2nd, 2012. Only way stakeholders can see how NC is spending public funds. Some random examples from Dunn's webpage of neighborhood council spending of public funds. Enterprise rent a car over $100. Verizon, Time Warner, charges for one NC over $90. Rent over $14,000. Neighborhood council spending over 50% of their budget on temporary staff is not acceptable. Dunn Treasure Handbook states operations which include temporary staff and office space should not spend more than 20% of the total budget. Why is Dunn allowing this to happen? Other neighborhood council funding issues include split transactions, advance payment on a credit card paid in June 2011, but actually get the merchandise a year later in June 2012. Another comment has to do with animal services, light animal services and animal licenses paid for multiple years for discounts. Is there a refund policy if an animal no longer resides in LA City? And again, the remote testimony took me 20 minutes to get here and 25 cents. Can you top that getting me downtown? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Mong. Michael Mong from Van Nuys.
Hello. My name is Michael. I came to say I think people who use marijuana- I came to say I think people who use marijuana bring bad luck, and I came to say I think rented R material should not be advertised. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next group of speakers, if we can call your name, please come up to the microphone. You have Heidi Uier, Alexi Keats, and Mr. Juarez Riordan, I believe. I'm having a hard time reading that last name, but Heidi Uier, Alexi Keats, and Mr. Juarez. Come on up. Good day, ma'am.
Hello. My name's Heidi Uier. There is a real need for myself and many of me others to have safe access to medical marijuana. It's very important. And before you make a decision, I would hope that you would talk with Canadian officials because they've been doing it for a long time, and I think it works for them, and they know how to go about it. You'd find out firsthand. And as for taxes, just imagine what all that money could do for Los Angeles. It's good in a lot of ways, but especially the medical part. But thank you.
Good morning, Council members. My name is Alexi Keats, and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I want you to know how truly grateful I am for this chance to create a dialogue. Our community's strength rests on its willingness to communicate, and my colleagues in the patient community have exercised that strength quite regularly since the ordinances to ban collectives first crawled onto the agenda. Much of what you've heard in the past weeks have come with a certain degree of rage towards you, as though you were somehow separate from us, like some foreign enemy, but you are no more separate from the community than any of us. Just like the rest of us, you are subjects to all of life's woes and worries, and I apologize if in the past I've appeared ignorant of that fact. But the bans on collectives currently awaiting decision would, however, do the same to a large section of this city's people. Its sweeping, highly restricted nature would strip safe access from those who need it most. By removing this ordinance from the agenda, you will send the message that you will not simply give up on the patient community. You remain willing to communicate and not to criminalize. If you remove this ordinance, these ordinances from the agenda, you give Los Angeles the opportunity to formulate a safe, self-regulating system of dispensaries, and any move to help that system develop will establish a strong collaboration. Take our presence here as a sign. We in the patient community are willing to stand on your side. Will you stand on ours?
Thank you very much. Mr. Juarez Riordan, we have, after him, we have Kobe Lopez and Lynn Cohen. Please come on up to the microphone, please. We called your names. Come on up. Thank you. Good day, sir.
Good morning, everybody. I want to tell you what I say to the police chief, Mr. Ranton. I saw Mr. Ranton in the middle of October 2002 with the mayor and two ladies, and they say Mr. Ranton is going to start with a gang member, Yanki. And the day they present Mr. Ranton, I say, "Good morning, Mr. Ranton. I wish you the best of luck, but before you start with a gang member, you better start with your own gang." One day, I say, "Chief, do me a favor. Go back to New York because from there you're coming from. You never will control the gangster we inform or Los Angeles Police Department that kill babies in cold blood like Devin Brown." And one day, I say, "Please, Yanki, go home. Don't come back no more." And this time, the chief answered me. He say, "I don't want to stay too long." And before he went to New York, I said, "Vaya con Dios with Yanki, New York." I got three complaints, one for police, one for sheriff, one for the border patrol. Three times police brutality to me, but they can stop me. I'm cool and I'm clean, and I hope someday I get paid for the mistake the police made with my family and me. L.A. Police no good, City Attorney Office no good, Yanki Department no good, Member Council no good. Corruptos.
Gracias. Thank you. Kobe Lopez, Lynn Cohen, and then Bill Hui.
How you guys doing today? Just want to start by thanking for the opportunity to speak here. I'm a medical marijuana patient, and like I said before, I'm a disabled Army veteran. I don't want to sound like a broken record every time I come here. I would just like to point out certain facts, thoughts, ideas you could think of in the back of your head. Right now, everybody's against this collective thing, marijuana thing for patients. A lot of you, I'm not saying you, but people in general, they don't believe the whole medical thing behind it. They don't know what kind of patients, what kind of illnesses we suffer from, and I mean, do just a little bit of research. Right now, it's marijuana, and I just want to ponder the question. One day, someone's going to come up, sit maybe behind one of these chairs, and I mean, what's the next drug or prescription, whatever, whatnot, we're going to choose? What other disability are we going to not care about? What other illness, sickness, are we just going to say, "No, what? Let's ban this medication from pharmacies?" You know, every day I see commercials, lawyers looking for people who took all these different medications. Now their babies are born with defects, illnesses, they're sick, they got cancer, or they're dead, and their family's trying to represent, you know, for them. No one's standing up and trying to ban those medications. Let's do some research, find out what's killing people, stop that, make that illegal, find out what's not killing people, and leave it alone. You know, don't knock it till you try. It's an old saying, but it's not like that. If you're sick and you need it, then it's there. If you're not sick, you're truly, really never going to understand. I mean, you could look at that in any concept of life. You know, no one knows what it's like to be the president, and so you're the president. No one knows what it's like to be sick and saved by medical marijuana until you're sick and saved by medical marijuana. So don't discriminate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please give us your name.
You called Lynn Cohen ahead of me, then you called me, but I want to speak for her because she's a little nervous. Is that okay?
Please go ahead.
Okay. My name is Bill Hui. I'm president of Fair Housing Coalition. We believe in equality for landlords and renters. Lynn Cohen has two apartment buildings up in Van Nuys. She's an outstanding citizen, a senior citizen. They inspected her buildings without giving her a 15-day notice. So she's submitted, she paid the fees and everything, and then she wanted a hearing. She paid $128 to get a hearing, and she won. The L.A. Housing Department admitted they didn't give her proper notice to inspect her properties, said, "We're going to give you a refund." She was entitled to about $702 refund. Well, she's been waiting three years. They tell her that they're a year behind in reimbursing funds. How can the housing department be a year behind and forgive themselves for their ineptness when if a landlord is one day late in making a payment, it's a 300% penalty? She still has not seen her $702. The housing department is a very discrimination, we're talking about hate crimes, discrimination. They discriminate on older people because they know that older people won't fight back. This is discrimination. She's being abused. She's calling every week. They flip her to somebody else, and they think they can give her a runaround. This is three years. She's waiting for her reimbursement. She has all the documentations, all the letters here. This housing department needs a house cleaning. It should be fair for landlords and renters. And one more thing, as far as the money for these outside contractors, whatever money is allocated for renters groups should be allocated equally for landlords. The majority of landlords obey the law. Some of these renters groups are aligned with lawyers who make a career out of suing landlords. The whole system is corrupt, and someone should help Lynn. I believe her building is in Councilman Kocorian's district, but this poor lady for three years, Ms. Cohen, right here, this is outrageous. This is discrimination.
Ms. Cohen, just for the record, can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Lynn Cohen.
Lynn Cohen, okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
He said it all. Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you. And Councilman Kocorian is approaching the podium. Ms. Cohen, you have Councilman Kocorian there at your side, and he'll be responding to your request. Kobe Lopez already spoke. Is Kobe Lopez here? Okay, already spoke. C. Graham, Michael Carrion, Jess Thompson. I come up to the microphone, please. C. Graham. Good day, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. Can I speak now? Or should I wait? Oh, okay. Hi, Busciani. My name is Candace Graham, and I'm a product of the ERA. My, I'm a civil rights advocate, as you know. We're in a depression right now, and I agree full-heartedly with Mr. Hui. My father was a freedom, my stepdad was a freedom rider. My mom and my dad helped to discriminate Reno, Nevada, helped to segregate Reno, Nevada. My uncle was one of the first CHP officers in Northern California. The L.A. Housing Department is an agency that isn't and hasn't addressed discrimination, and they have a systematic way of profiling and discriminating against people around Los Angeles, the very people that put money into their services. Now, the landlords and tenants that they're, well, the landlords that they're discriminating against, they don't have a viable form to be able to help these people, to be able to say that they're being discriminated against. They're being blackballed, they're being railroaded. 99% or most of my city council members do know that. And right now, you're going to be open to lawsuits because of our timing right now and because of this depression that we're in. I'm asking, or there will be a boycott real soon, so it will cost the city approximately, if not over $49 million. And I'm not one for that. I am setting up appointments with various councilmen of people like Mr. Hui that have come up to me and apartment owners, property owners that are discriminated against.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Michael Carrion, followed by Jess Thompson, followed by Kamani Evans. Yes, Michael, good morning.
Good morning. Here we are once again. We're talking about hate crimes and discrimination. We have two officers sitting over here, been yakking for the past hour, and another officer sitting there doesn't tell them to be quiet. A homeless person here speaks up, and they run over here and threaten to throw him out. Hate crimes and discrimination are going on right here against the public. These two officers and the gentleman in a white shirt right there have been talking for an hour, disrupting this meeting, but the officer sits there and doesn't tell them anything. Yet, a homeless person was speaking to Mr. Alicon earlier, and the other officer runs up and tells him, "If you don't shut up, I'll get you kicked out of here right now." In that manner, not you, the officer did. And the meeting hadn't even started. I mean, you know, this is uncalled for. Back to the Soto Street project. I spoke to Mr. Buscaino yesterday, and he said, he told you guys when he left that this was, they were going to have a meeting, but again, it's not going to happen this week. It's going to happen in two more weeks. Just so you know, you're discriminating against the people in El Salerno by allowing this project to continue. This lady hadn't get paid in three years. We've got an artery to northeast Los Angeles that's been blocked for eight years, and you guys have done nothing about it. Okay? Mr. Weiser's office, I can't get a document, one paper I asked for in the past three years just to find out where it's at, and I haven't been able to get that. He's looking into it. Hopefully, I get it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, Council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. As some of my colleagues have come up before you already, and urge you to remove any item off the agenda that would propose a ban to limit safe access to quality, affordable medicine for hundreds and thousands of patients in this great city of Los Angeles. This is about the quality of life for many of these people. Please do not lower their quality of life. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
I'm a 41-year-old man that was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis March 25th, 2010. Prior to this diagnosis, I was completely healthy, nothing wrong at all. When I get out of the bed in the morning, it feels as if someone has poured cement on both of my legs when I attempt to walk. Mentally and physically, this disease is horrible, but I am living well with it. LBC Collective, I am a patient of, and there I receive physical and mental compassion. The medical marijuana helps me actually walk better. It releases some of the stress off of my nerves. I have shakes, tremors, all of these things, not to mention the mental healing that comes out of collectives. There are some days where I don't want to get up. I don't want to fight, but it's nothing like a smile. "How you doing, Kamani? How do you feel?" These things are so precious to us, and this is what we need. I oppose the ban on collectives. Again, like a patient said before me, this is about quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Shim, Cesar Perez, Mr. Bob Cooper. Three names, want to see three people. You can just go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Cesar Perez. I'm just hearing in front of you guys, speak over 300,000 patients. We all just want to save, secure access. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, where's Ms., well, here. Deborah, come forward, then you, Mr. Cooper. Yes.
Good morning, Council members, and I'm sure all of you have noticed or are aware of how big the medical marijuana community is, and you were able to firsthand hear stories from some of our patients, and think of how many thousands of patients haven't been able to come up here and share their stories with you, and think of the hundreds of thousands of patients you'd be taking safe access away from if you were to oppose collectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Cooper, followed by Dow House Dude, followed by Zachary Glosserman. Mr. Cooper.
Yes, as you know, my name is Mr. Cooper. I'm here not to comment with regards to medical marijuana, but I will say this, it's worked for me for many years, and that's the only thing that keeps me alive today, really. Okay, I'm here today just to notify the council members up there that I have $5 million worth of law claims against the city. $5 million that I am dropping. Today, we'll be putting together documentation to drop any claims I have against the city. My organization wants to work with the city. You have a number of council members up there that are in my business, that are named as secondary owners of my business. For six years, I've been coming down here trying to find out who's stealing from me. Now, I can look across the room and just about tell, well, I already know. What I come here for is to let you know, I'm trying to get my income tax, and you people up there, some of you up there is the one that's blocking me. My money is at Bank of America and five other banks in this city and out of the city that you have control over. I'd appreciate it if you'd get out of my business. I'm dropping a $5 million lawsuit and trying to solicitate members of the board to join my board of trustees and taking care of the money that I would have gotten in any type of claim from the city, I would have given to the poor people anyway. But I want to tell you this, this is predicated on you stop the harassment and replace all the equipment that your office is destroying. That's about it with regards, yeah, that's about it. Replace all equipment and stop the hate crimes. You know, I know all about it. I'm 20 years old. I was an investigator for lawyers. I know how it works, and I know all of your business. So just accommodate me, let me work with you. You know, I'm not your enemy.
Thank you.
You've got some beautiful offices that you got out here. You got a beautiful city. You don't need these skinheads, people from El Salvador gangs working with the police department. You don't need that.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Dude. Mr. Dude. Go right ahead.
The issue is housing. The issue, do not take housing away from people because they owe you a little bit of imaginary taxes. Krikorian, quit talking to Alarcon. Krikorian, hello?
Address the body, Mr. Dude.
Anyway, see, Alarcon has a homeless son. Krikorian, the old man that I brought here was helping his campaign so much for many days, and Krikorian told him, "Hey, just go pay the bill. We don't care about your tax bill that was supposedly not paid seven years ago. You're a senior citizen. If you don't pay sixteen hundred dollars, your ass is on the street." You know, how simple to rob the people, the people that give you the money. See, I'm talking about a formula here, and you better read this book. It's a formula for getting us pushed into a different direction. We don't need no thieves in our pockets. You are a bunch of thieves with a license. That's what you are. We did not elect you to become thieves with a license, and that's what you all do with your parking meters, with your imaginary ticketing, with your police state, blah, blah, blah.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Glosserman.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Zach Glosserman. I'm proud to say that I have never claimed residence in any other place other than our great city of Los Angeles. I would never like to claim any other city as my home. I'm a concerned citizen, I'm a concerned citizen speaking on behalf of the opposition of the ban on medical marijuana dispensaries in Los Angeles. For the past five years, the day I turned eighteen, I have never been, sorry, for the past five years since the day I turned eighteen, I've been blessed with the opportunity to have safe access to marijuana as well as volunteering at the dispensaries that are being discussed. Even though I have not used marijuana for some years now, I still volunteer thirty-plus hours of my time a week at a dispensary because I believe it is imperative for patients to have safe, comfortable, and dependable access to their medicine. I cannot describe how many people's lives I have seen benefit from the use of medical marijuana. It touches my heart when a patient looks at me in the eye and tells me how big of a positive difference it has made in their life. If dispensaries were forced to be closed down, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night knowing someone with cancer, AIDS, Crohn's disease, HIV, or any other of the horrible diseases that marijuana has been proven to aid in the treatment of be denied their medicine that they rely on for a better quality of life. God forbid someone close to you had cancer, and the only way to get them to eat during their treatment was to use marijuana. I think your opinions on keeping the dispensaries open would change. I strongly encourage you as the city council to take the ban on medical marijuana dispensaries off the agenda completely and to allow patients to have safe access to the medicine that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could call for, that ends general public comment. If I could call for Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer for our second presentation of the day. Mr. Reyes? Could somebody please find Mr. Reyes? And when we finish this presentation, we will go immediately to item seventeen.
If Councilman Alarcon and Councilman Carrington would like to join us, you're very much welcome. Councilman Alarcon? Richard? Would you like to join us? Is Tony here?
Nice whistle, Mr. Reyes. Could have been a little stronger.
Well, I didn't want to get too much of the neighborhood out of me right now. But colleagues, thank you so much for your patience, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Governor Edmond G. Brown Jr., historian Juan Felipe Herrera, as California poet laureate today at the state capitol on March 26, 2012. On that day, Herrera also became the state's first Latino poet laureate. Some might say Chicano, some might say Mexicano, some might say Hispanic. Bottom line, his last name is Herrera, and I'm glad he's here. The son of migrant workers, Herrera earned a bachelor's degree in social anthropology from University of California, Los Angeles, that's UCLA. A master of arts in social anthropology from Stanford University, and a master's of fine arts in creative writing from the University of Iowa. From 1990 to 2004, Professor Herrera served as professor in Chicano and Latin American Studies at Cal State Fresno. Before that, he was teaching assistant fellow at Iowa's Writers Workshop at the University of Iowa from 1988 to 1990. He served as Tomas Rivera Endow Chair in the Department of Creative Writing at the University of California, Riverside. The internationally acclaimed poet, authored twenty-eight books, has received numerous awards and fellowships. Herrera, Professor Herrera was elected to the Board of Chancellors for the Academy of American Poets in 2011, was awarded the Guggenheim Fellowship in Poetry in 2010, and won the National Book Critics Circle Award in Poetry in 2009. In 2008, Review of Herrera's Work, a New York Times critic wrote, "Many poets since the 1960s have dreamed of a new hybrid art, part oral, part RIN, part English, part something else, an art grounded in ethnic identity, fueled by collective pride, yet irreducibly individual too. Many poets have tried to create such an art. Professor Herrera is one of the first to succeed." Herrera is well-loved by his students, his peers, and the people of Los Angeles. As evident during a visit last week, Professor Herrera packed the Amundson Auditorium at the Museum of Contemporary Art in Los Angeles for a lively discussion co-sponsored by the City Department of Cultural Affairs as part of the Socalo Public Square, a Los Angeles project that connects people to ideas and to each other in an open, accessible, nonpartisan, and broad-minded spirit. Professor Herrera is a poet of the California valleys and deserts, a poet of farmworkers and families, a poet embraced by people of all fields, including arts, education, science, and government, and an inspiration to people globally, especially in the city of Los Angeles. And I do want to thank him for being here. He's very busy, but it is my honor to share this podium with him, especially in these times when there is such meanness, such hostility to this notion of diversity and this immigrant experience. But I'd like to ask my colleagues if they'd like to join me in welcoming Professor Herrera. Councilman Garcetti?
First, give him a round of applause. That's a great honor. That's a great honor, Professor.
Thank you. I'll be brief, and it is an honor indeed to welcome our poet laureate here, the child of campesinos, a punk rock panther, lowrider poet, a man who has for a long time inspired community and told the story that is California, a place after all named after, named from literature, Calafia, the Spaniards who came here and thought this was an island, Calafia, which was written about in the 1500s, of an island of Amazons that would only take men onto the island in order to have children, then kill them off. We have an incredible history that goes back and forth between a border that's sometimes there and is sometimes not, but I want to thank you for reminding us that there really is no border in our imagination and in our minds, and telling that story of the complicated history of California, we finally, I think, have found a poet laureate who represents not just the richness of that, the complexity of that, but the beauty of it as well. So keep on riding, keep on pacing as a panther, and keep on making great art. Congratulations.
Councilman Weezer.
Thank you very much, and it's a great pleasure to congratulate Juan Felipe Herrera for the works he has done and now to be named a California poet laureate. And the purpose of being a California poet laureate is to bring the poetic arts to Californians and to Californian students who might otherwise have little opportunity to be exposed to poetry. And the work he is doing is incredible, not only in his past works, but the work he's doing to expose our young people through a medium which they now are very familiar with, and that is the internet. He is working to get a poem circulated throughout the internet, and he's doing a great job at that, but not only reaching our students, but bringing to them ideas and thoughts about some experiences that they don't get in their classrooms. So congratulations, we are very proud of you, and it's a pleasure to have you here in the city of Los Angeles.
Councilman Alarcon.
Juan Felipe Herrera is not a household name, but he is somebody who has tremendous impact on the state of California. As, first of all, I think he looks like a poet laureate. I think that's pretty cool, especially one from LA, so I think that's a good thing. But when a governor selects a poet laureate, you have to ask yourself, what's the purpose of that? And having been in the state senate, I remember when other governors have had that task before them. And the responsibility is to reflect California's interests and where they are at a particular time period. And I can't think of anybody who reflects the California experience any more than Juan Felipe Herrera. Secondly, the poet laureate is to inspire others to document their history in written form, whether it be in poetry, or whether it be communicating with their family, or writing articles in newspapers, or writing books, and in California, certainly, writing films to demonstrate to the world who we are as a state. That is inspired by our poet laureate. So it is a largely unknown honor, but it has a tremendous responsibility. And in the state of California, where our public school systems are performing far less than they were when I was coming up through the educational system, we need to inspire our young people to be writers. We need to inspire them to be poets. We need to have them document their history so that they can have a strong foundation to build a great future for us. That is a part of the responsibility, and I think we have a great advocate for that responsibility in Juan Felipe Herrera. So we want to commend him, we thank him for his presence, and we hope that he takes this honor on the road and continues to inspire young people to be writers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Alarcon. And now I give you Juan Felipe Herrera, California poet laureate. Thank you. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias. Thank you so much, dear council members, and thank you for honoring me with this beautiful plaque. It's a great honor to my parents, campesinos, farmworkers. It's a great honor to all the people that I meet, all the young people that I meet, all the students and families that I meet who show me their hands and say, "This is all I have for my children," and they show me their hands, which are red and tangled and scarred, and they say, "Thank you for being an educator." That's what we want from you, because we don't have that. We have these hands. So thank you, dear council members, for giving me this moment to bring their words to you and to listen to the words of the city of Los Angeles in this space, in this auditorium. I am here to promote those words. I'm here to promote the words of the people. I'm here to promote the words of the children, whether they speak English or not, or a little or a lot. I'm here to help the teachers in their classrooms, and I'm here to enrich our communities with your advice, with your input, with your guidance as well. So I thank you so much, and I thank the Governor Brown, I thank Chancellor White, California Arts Council, all those beautiful entities that made all this possible since we're all together in one heart, one ocean, and one consciousness of empowerment for all beings. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Garcetti, and Councilmember Alarcon, and everyone, once again.
Thank you, and again, congratulations. By chance, you wouldn't want to hit us with a quick paragraph of something special, would you? Put you on the spot.
I'll have to, just create it right here. In these halls of voices, in these halls of many hearts, there is one light. It is a light from the streets, the lights from the homes, the light from the families, heart to heart, word to word, hand to hand, mind to mind, as we spread the golden voices across California, through the roofs, and across the adobe-colored walls. They will fly as eagles, they will fly as birds, and they will spell freedom. Thank you so much.
Professor, you are a natural, okay? All right, Mr. Krikorian, before I take up item seventeen, are you comfortable with twenty-eight?
Yes, Mr. President, unless members have questions that they'd like to ask in closed session, this is a modest settlement of an employment matter, and the Budget and Finance Committee considered it, evaluated it, and would recommend approval of the recommendations.
Okay. No speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, if I may, I believe I will collaborate here with the city attorney in reading the recommendation relative to item twenty-eight in the case entitled Anne Weiss-Gerber versus the City of Los Angeles. There is a recommendation to expend forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in settlement.
They have recommendation against. What we have is recommendation against, excuse me, that's what it says. The form we have, it says recommendation against.
Mr. Krikorian.
Well, there's two.
Well, the chair indicated that he is suggesting that we vote for this.
There was, if you're looking at two reports, there was a previous report recommending denial of a settlement. There was a subsequent report by the city attorney after further negotiations for a lesser settlement amount. That's why you may have two reports in the packet. So the recommendation of the committee is to approve the settlement that was negotiated that's reflected in the more recent report.
All right, then. No speakers in the queue on this item. Let's open the roll.
Pardon me, sir, I believe the city attorney has something he'd like to add.
And just to make sure there's no more questions, otherwise, we would need to go into closed session.
I looked at this request against, a recommendation against, and then a recommendation for, and I think the recommendation for is, what's the total that we're talking about?
Well, see, Mr. Zine, I want to take up Ms. Perry's item because I told her that I would. If you have some other questions, then you should talk with the chair and Mr. City Attorney. When I got it, let me roll it, okay? Because I had it. All right. So we're going to now move to seventeen. Ms. Perry, you have two public comment cards.
Thank you.
You want to do them first?
Yes, please.
Arnold Sacks and Craig Lawson, please come forward. Arnold Sacks and Craig Lawson, whoever gets there first. Craig, go right ahead.
Mr. President, members, Craig Lawson, on behalf of the property owners within the Figueroa Olympic Sign District, and thank you for hearing this today. We greatly appreciate the efforts of Councilmember Jan Perry to keep this proposal going forward. A signage is a controversial issue, but in this case, it makes sense. This is a signed district immediately across from— This is a sign district immediately across from LA Live, right near Staples Center, and this block includes several high-rise buildings, as well as a future project for FIDM. The number of signs proposed is very modest, and we ask that you approve Exhibit B of the city attorney's report. We're here to answer questions. We have representatives of some of the owners. If you would like to have questions, there's also staff here if you have those. So thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate your support of this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Okay, so Craig, you can hang around for a bit. With that, Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, if I may, pardon me, Councilmember Perry. Before you is motion, excuse me, is motion 17A, which has been circulated. That's motion Perry-Wesson.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Perry, I just located another card. Ann, please come forward.
Good morning. Ann Nguyen with the Central City Association. We strongly support the Figueroa Olympic Sign District. It establishes much-needed guidelines for the creation use of signage in the project area. Visual pollution concerns have been sufficiently mitigated, and the plans do fall in line with the character of the community. High-intensity signage is appropriately focused on key commercial corridors, and the low-intensity signage is nearby existing residential buildings. It creates a vibrant and exciting sense of place in downtown and something we desperately need. We urge you to move forward with this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. To all the members, I am asking you to support an ordinance which has been eight years in the making. The Figueroa and Olympic Signage District has a very long history. It was approved by the City Planning Commission on December the 11th, 2008, and then was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning and Land Use Management Committee on February the 10th, 2009. For the last three years, the application has been held in abeyance or pending due to the citywide signage ban ordinance. At this point in time, thanks to the hard work of the city attorney's office and the city planning department, this signage district is finally ready to move forward. Given the past approvals, the length of time that it has taken us to get to this point, there should be no reason for this not to move forward today. No questions or concerns have been raised, and in the last hearing before Plumb, not a single speaker came forward to oppose this in committee. If any member has a question today, we do have staff here in the city attorney's office and the city planning department to address your questions. I have submitted an amending motion today, and it is before you, 17A. You also have a letter from me regarding this item, and it is a copy of a letter dated June 18, 2012, and this was the letter that was sent to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and the substance of that was outlined again in Plumb, and you have that for your review. The motion calls for the adoption of Exhibit B provided by the city attorney's office in conjunction with the attached additional findings. The city attorney's office has provided the council with two ordinances titled Exhibit A and Exhibit B, and has stated that the council has the ability to adopt either exhibit since it is strictly a matter of policy. The only difference between Exhibit A and B is that Exhibit B provides unrestricted animation for the digital display sign located on the northwest corner of Olympic Boulevard and Flower Street. The unrestricted animation only applies to the proposed Fashion Institute of Design Merchandise residential project and is necessary to reflect creative activities such as fashion shows and the school's students, as well as graphics and signage to activate the building's facade. The motion calls for the adoption of supplemental findings in support of the adoption of the sign district, which was submitted to Plumb last week, and then, again, they're attached to the motion copy that you have. The Figueroa Olympic Sign District supports and enhances the urban design objectives of the Central City Community Plan and reinforces the pedestrian-oriented character of the streets. This will be a transformative activity for this area of downtown. And lastly, I would like to emphasize to all of us that we talk a lot about being business-friendly here in this city, and we have time and time again articulated our desire to streamline our process and reduce the administrative burdens put on applicants. Now, I told you when this process started, eight years in the making. The applicants have gone out of their way to ensure that they met every single obligation and expectation placed upon them by the city of Los Angeles. I appreciate their patience, their willingness to work with the city of Los Angeles despite the inordinate amount of delays. Again, this has been eight years. I believe we should move forward and demonstrate we're doing our part to support this project, and I ask for your support on my amending motion, 17A, with an eye vote.
Mr. Rosendorf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for having the patience and the fortitude to stick on it for eight years and make it happen. Frankly, we know a lot over time, and to stay focused on something is very important. And I just want to read this, what Ms. Perry has said. "To this end, the Figueroa and Olympic Sign District has already provided significant public benefits, including a $467,768 traffic mitigation fee, a $634,139 public art fee, and a $2.6 million affordable housing fee." And just seeing that and hearing that and understanding it is a great plus, and I want to thank you, Ms. Perry, for what you did. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Yes. There are no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Mr. Wiesar.
Yes, I'd like to send that forthwith to the second reading, please.
Okay.
Very good, and for the record, that will go over to a second read on council's first day back, which is July 24.
All right, then. So let's go to item 12, which is Mr. Coretts's issue. We have cards on this item. Mr. Coretts, I will read the cards. We'll start with that, if that's okay with you. So first, we go to the Valley for Marion Fogler, and then Scott Zubak is here, and Tess Jones.
Yeah, I just want to say that I don't know much of the subject, but at hand, if you're going to reconsider this and reopen this, what about the redistricting? You didn't have a right to public hearing. So, you know, you're shutting us down here, and obviously, this is undemocratic what you're doing.
Stay on the item.
This is undemocratic what you're doing. You reconsider this item, but you don't reconsider the redistricting. So there's something wrong here with the city council. The way you're running the rules and Robert rules here, you're not buying by it.
Mr. President, it doesn't appear that she's talking about this item.
Okay. So now, if we could return to City Hall. Oh, wait, before you start, the city attorney has to make an announcement.
Just two matters. First of all, this is a fair hearing matter requiring the heightened attention of the council members to the speaker at the podium or at their monitors at their desks. And secondly, I've been informed that there is an amendment to the findings, specifically amended to the Planning and Land Use Management Report, recommendation number seven. The very last word on page one should say "varying" instead of "minimum" at the top of page two. The reference to 10 feet should be changed to 11 feet. The reference to 7 feet should be changed to 6 feet in two different instances. And then, in the summary, the fourth to the last line wherein it states, "After an opportunity for public comment, the following clause should be inserted. The committee adopted the additional findings submitted by the applicant after ascertaining from the zoning administrator that there was no new evidence to support a remand to the zoning administrator." The committee then, and then continues as previously stated in the report.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Scott, Tess Jones, Jeff Gantman. So I called three names. I like to see three people.
With all due respect to the city attorney's office, it is ridiculous to assume that there is no new evidence present in a project that has never been seen by the zoning administrator and has been illegally under construction for almost two years without, I may add, any city inspections at least in the last nine months. All that the neighborhood wants is for this process to be handled correctly. The information submitted to Plumb yesterday constitutes new evidence and must be properly considered by the zoning administrator. This has clearly become a political issue. It needs to be taken out of the political forum and sent back to the zoning administrator as directed by Superior Court Judge Chalfont and the court's writ of mandate. Just so you don't think that I'm just blowing smoke up here, you can read the Superior Court transcript for yourself. Judge Chalfont states more than once, "When this project goes back to the zoning administrator," it's quite clear. And what is most suspect here is that after four years, what is being accepted for fact, for findings and conditions in this case, were not written by your city zoning administrator, they were written by Chabad's attorney. So I have a question to go on the record for the city council. Is this the way you run this city? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tess Jones, Jeff Gantman, Ben Resnick.
Thank you, Councilman Coretts. Thank you, Councilman Coretts, for opening up public comments. Yesterday's Plumb hearing should have included time for rebuttal, but it did not. Strangely, that hearing was a redo of a three-and-a-half-year-old APC hearing, except that the appellant's only got three minutes to speak and the rest of us one minute. Another difference was the fact that there was no thoughtful review of the evidence before the committee members. The writ of mandate says nothing about a 245 redo in this case. There is no 245 that is active. Jack Weiss's 245 motion is more than three years old. This is a lawsuit that the city lost, and the city was ordered to send the matter back to the ZA for review. Time does not stand still. The ZA's hearing was about four years ago. Of course, there is new evidence in those four years, evidence that did not come to light until after the ZA's determination. That is why it could not have been reasonably presented to her. Therefore, I'm asking the city council to deny this motion that is before you and send any and all new evidence back to the ZA for review. At this point in time, that is all that the city council has the authority to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Gantman, followed by Ben Resnick, followed by Rabbi Aaron Abind. Yes.
Good morning, counsel, and again, thank you, Councilman Coretts, for allowing us to speak on this matter once again. As I stated yesterday at the Plumb hearing, this council must augment the record, including the MND. Planning must do a new environmental review prosequo. There is new evidence, despite what's been said, that was not before the zoning administrator at the time of her original determination in 2008. In light of this, as per the writ of mandate that was commanding this city to not only vacate the entitlements, but per 12.27K of the municipal code, council has to identify this new evidence and recommend that the matter go back to the ZA for a full and thorough review prior to any further action. This meeting and yesterday's meeting are simply not the appropriate forums for this discussion. We ask the city council to follow the law in this case, as it has repercussions, not just for our neighborhood, but for all Los Angeles's single-family neighborhoods. I'm glad that Mr. Resnick is following me, because I want everybody who's listening to this, and it goes on the record, to pay special attention to what he says, because he's a gifted orator, and I think that the challenge is, is that ultimately what we're talking about is a project that is about subjective. Chabad is entitled to have a building in our neighborhood. They have been here for 30 years. They will be here for another 30. I think what's at issue here is the number of people we've been told versus what's being done and the activities, and simply the size of the structure that's on that lot is too big. It's not that it's an ugly building, or it's not a nice building. It's simply too large and doesn't have the appropriate conditions to mitigate any of the challenges that currently exist, including parking. So that's what the neighborhood is concerned about. It's not, and will never be, about Chabad. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Resnick, followed by Rabbi Aaron Abind and Isadora Bailey or Bali. Yes, Mr. Resnick.
Ben Resnick with Jeffrey Mangles-Butler and Mitchell, representing Chabad of the Valley and Chabad of North Hollywood. Members of the council, this case, you have approved this project before. After you approved it the first time, valid building permits were issued, construction commenced, and the project is more than halfway through. Litigation ensued, and ultimately, what the court decided was that the findings were not adequate enough to show where the zoning administrator erred. New findings were made, and the court set it aside for that purpose. The court never said you cannot approve this project. The court never said this project is inappropriate. It just said the findings needed to be fixed. Yesterday, your Plumb Committee adopted a new set of findings, fixing what the court articulated needed to be fixed. This has been an important project for the Chabad community. All those people here from Chabad and in favor or support of Chabad, would you mind just standing for a moment so the council can see you? This has been long in doing. Chabad has had a very small cramped facility. Its site is bordered by the orange line on the north and on the east, so the MTA wall is their partner. Chandler on the south, that's 150 foot right away, and Ethel on the west. Not a single private property abuts Chabad. It's an interesting, unique situation. So what we're asking you to do is adopt the Plumb report today and approve the Plumb report. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Rabbi Abind, Isadora Bailey, Mickey Jinnal, Rabbi.
Good morning, President Wesson and members of the city council. My name is Rabbi Aaron Abind. I am the rabbi of Chabad of North Hollywood. We've been present at that location for 31 years. We are families of the immediate neighborhood who have purchased homes to be within walking distance of our house of worship. Our new building is to create a dignified facility to those who attend our services. We look forward to your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. You are?
Good morning. My name is Isadora Bailey. My wife and I moved into the neighborhood 18 years ago so we could be part of a growing Jewish community. Chabad is a big part of the growth of that community. Parking is not an issue. My family and I walk to synagogue as were required to do since we are observant Jews. We look forward with great anticipation for the completion of the Chabad building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mickey Jinnal, Elki Abind, Di Tongavet. Yes, sir.
My name is Mickey Jinnal. I reside in Valley Glen. Good morning, Mr. President. Greeting councilmen and councilwomen, officers and councilman courts for shepherding the process, my councilman, Herr Corian, for the great job you've done for our community. Thank you very much. I stand here in full support of Chabad and the adoption of the Plumb Committee findings, and I hope that gains your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Elki Abind, Di Tongavet, and Blima Toler. Toler. Hi.
Good afternoon. My name is Elki Abind, and I live at 5246 Ethel Avenue. We recently bought our home, which is 600 feet from Chabad of North Hollywood, and we have five small children, and they all greatly enjoy walking to and from synagogue every week, which is why we live in such close proximity to our Chabad. This congregation means a lot to my family, and we are very excited for its completion. I thank you for your time and assistance with this matter.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Di Tongavet. My family have been living across from Chabad for 20 years. I would like to ask you all, councilmen, did you did you ever visit the area? What Chabad is asking is too big, too tall, and lack of parking and out of character of our neighborhood. This is invading my privacy. Before you gentlemen make your decision, I really would like to invite all of you visit the area first before saying yes or no. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Blima Toller. I live seven doors from the Chabad. My husband and his family have been going to services there for over 30 years now. And when I married my husband and moved into the community 13 years ago, began to go to services there as well. We've always walked. And over the years, as our family grew, it was time to buy a home. And we bought our home seven doors from Chabad due to its proximity to the synagogue. I just wanted to thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you on council will remember, the synagogue was approved in June 2009 after my predecessor, 245, the project to counsel. The applicant originally proposed a 16,000-square-foot synagogue, but was approved by the Associate Zoning Administrator for a 10,300-square-foot facility. The council, recognizing errors with the decision, approved a 12,000-square-foot religious facility. A group of neighbors filed a lawsuit, which they lost in the trial court. The plaintiffs then appealed to the decision, and they partially succeeded on appeal. The City Attorney's Office recommended that we comply with the order of the Appeals Court by setting aside the council's prior approval of this project and remand the issue back to Plum, which we have done. At Plum, a well-attended and thorough meeting to discuss the issues was held. After hearing from many community members, the City Attorney, and the Planning Department, the Plum Committee decided to pass the item to council today with a recommendation of approval. Attorneys for the synagogue have argued that we can comply with the order of the Appeals Court and again approve this project by issuing more accurate and appropriate, and accordingly, more defensible, findings. Given that the project has largely been constructed and that the project has a great deal of community support, this appears to be the correct way for us to proceed. The proposed findings for this case before you clearly explain how the Associate Zoning Administrator erred in discretion and how the current project, if approved, meets not only the requirements of the court case, but the needs of the community as well. I agree with Plum's decision, and I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. There are no members on the queue, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item has passed. Okay, we're going to take up item five. And where's our commissioner? Please come forward. I apologize. I forgot all about you, sir. And I'm not going to take the blame alone. So did Mr. Zein. So again, I'm sorry to keep you. I know your schedule is busy. Mr. Zein, do you want to speak on this item?
Well, I'd like to.
Because I don't want to keep him here any longer.
Well, he's been here for.
At least two hours and change.
And he took that long ride from the San Fernando Valley. So we appreciate you. I know that 101 freeway was a mess today. They're doing construction on Highland, and it was a long commute down there. But you had time to relax. You had a couple hours to relax, to acclimate yourself. So you're one of the senior members of the Quality and Productivity Commission. Why don't you explain why you want to continue on that particular commission? Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Councilman Zein. First of all.
I won't say Ben Resnick stood there watching you, by the way.
It's worth waiting two hours to hear an extemporaneous poem from the California poet laureate. So it was worth the time. Thank you. I've served on the Quality and Productivity Commission for approximately six years. And during that period of time, what we have seen is two sides of a coin. One side of a coin is that our city employees work hard. They focus on giving the taxpayers of the city their due and more. They're focused on providing a quality service to our city. The other side of the coin is that there are great improvements that can and should be made in how we operate our city from the grassroots level on up. And it's a long-term job. And I'm interested in staying on the commission because I think, to quote the Virginia Slims ad, "We've come a long, long way, baby, but we've got a long way to go." Thank you.
Very good. I know you're an author. You are currently south of Mulholland. But as I keep referring to, north of Mulholland, which is the title of your book. But I know that you've been an active member of the community for many years, a lot of different activities. We are in the computer age, but I know you still love typewriters. And you have a collection of those. But you're just one of those unique individuals that wants to give back. You've been successful in business enterprise, and you want to do something for the community, want to do something for the city. And we know that with happening in other parts of this country, with the economy, we need to have quality and productivity continue. And this commission is very, very much involved in that. So I think my colleagues are all going to support you. You've obviously shown the ability to withstand the pressures, come up with something positive. You used to have a large, if we want to say, five-member staff of city employees. Now I think you're down to maybe a half employee for staff. But the commission has continued to perform well. So I want to acknowledge and congratulate you and also for continuing this service to the people of Los Angeles. Marty Cooper, you got my support.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to say, being Vice Chair of Audit, it's been a good experience for me. And we got to know each other yesterday. I think our colleagues need to know and the public what this commission is all about. You do an annual event where you give out awards for people who do things. Explain that rather quickly.
Certainly, be glad to. Thank you, Councilman. Each year, the Quality and Productivity Commission does, as it has for approximately 25 years, invite all of the city departments to nominate the best work that they have done in the areas of quality, cost-effectiveness, and productivity. Our commission members go and visit those that we believe may be deemed worthy of an award. And we have an award ceremony each year. Each year, we have averaged about 100 nominations. And so we go and visit about half of those and see the wonderful work that our city employees are doing. I have a friend who is a newscaster who I invited once to address our honorees and to give out the awards. His name is David Horowitz. He's a consumer advocate. And David got up there and said, "This is sort of the Academy Award for city employees." And I think that's the best description I could give you.
Okay, so the point is, if they do what? You give them a plaque for it. What do they do?
If they save the city money, if they are more efficient in what they do, and if they can quantify it by putting down on their nomination the amount of money they are saving the city and how they are improving the quality of work in the city.
And that's excellent. And I want to make sure you share that with all of us in the council, which departments, which individuals, what kind of monies we're saving, so people can understand out there that your assignment basically is to keep that motivated employee being productive and save the city money, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. No-brainer, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Herkorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Mr. Cooper for all of his great service to the San Fernando Valley and to the city and to recommend his book to those of you who haven't read it, North of Mulholland. It's a fascinating read, and it gives us a lot of good suggestions about how to make the city more business-friendly. And I appreciated it and enjoyed it very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, it's my understanding that whatever issues we had on item 28 have been resolved. So, Mr. Clerk, it is my intention to take up item 28 at this time?
Very, very good, then. For the record, in the case entitled Anne Weissgerber versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $49,500 in settlement.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition, the settlement authorizes several non-monetary terms, including modification of the adjudication of the personnel complaint to not resolve, remove the personnel complaint from her official personnel folder, provide plaintiff with a reserve police officer badge, a retired police, reserve police officer badge, an identification card, and deem plaintiff honorably separated from the reserve officer corps.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Let's go to item. Mr. Zein, could you come up here for a second? We could just hold. Then we'll go to item 26. Mr. Corretts.
Mr. President, for the record, there is a substitute resolution. Substitute resolution before matter. That's 26. Substitute 26.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, there are several cards on this item. We're going to set the time for a public comment on this at one minute. So with that said, let's do public comment first. If I could get Vernon Snyder, Rosalyn Wang, Rose Braz. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I would just like to voice my support for and urge the council to support this Clean Air Act resolution. I believe this issue is urgently relevant in our society. Numerous scientific surveys, such as those by Caltech, UCLA, and many other local institutions, as well as national and global, have indicated the human influence on global climate change. And I believe this would be a wonderful opportunity for LA to move forward, make a local difference, as well as a global positive impact on the world.
Good morning, members of the council. Rosalyn Wong speaking on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council. The NRDC completely supports Mr. Corretts's resolution to encourage the full enforcement of the Clean Air Act and specifically EPA's mercury and air toxins standard and carbon pollution standard. The mercury and air toxins standard rule is necessary in order to curb the dangerous emissions from coal-fired power plants. EPA estimates that this standard will prevent 130,000 childhood asthma attacks, more than 6,000 cases of bronchitis among children, and prevent 11,000 premature deaths and 4,700 heart attacks annually. Further, these environmental benefits will result in the creation of 46,000 construction jobs and 8,000 permanent utility jobs as plans upgrade to cleaner technologies. The proposed carbon pollution standard would, for the first time, place national limits on the amount of carbon pollution power plants can emit. New fossil-fired power plants are the largest. Sorry. We just can't wait any longer for these kind of protections. So we encourage you to vote for this resolution.
Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rose Braz. I'm the Climate Campaign Director for the Center for Biological Diversity. And I'm speaking on behalf of the thousands of center supporters here in Los Angeles in support of this resolution. I think it's particularly appropriate and significant for LA to pass this resolution. We just saw two studies come out last week on the intensity and numerous number of heat waves for Southern California dramatically increasing, and sea level rise also dramatically affecting California at two to three times higher than had been previously estimated. The Clean Air Act is the good news. We have an answer. We just need to use it. We need to use it ambitiously and urgently. If LA passes this resolution, it would join cities like Chicago, Philadelphia, Cincinnati, Seattle, Boone, North Carolina, Tampa, and many others. It would become the 28th city as part of our Clean Air Cities campaign to pass a resolution in support of using the Clean Air Act to curb carbon pollution. And we hope you take.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Very good.
That move today. Thank you.
We have Paula Waxman, Marsha Hunt, and Arnold Sachs. Please come to the microphone. Paula Waxman, Marsha Hunt, and Arnold Sachs. Good day.
Hi, Marsha Hunt. And I am here in favor of the Clean Air Act. The science is all in, obviously, that the Clean Air Act works. It works, and it should continue. I don't know if any of you who are here in Los Angeles or remember Los Angeles in the late '60s and '70s. They had smog alerts. Children couldn't go outside at recess to play. They had to stay inside because the air was bad for them. Also, I don't know if you remember, it hurt. It hurts your lungs to ride a bike or to run on heavy smog days. Now, the Clean Air Act has been working for 40 years, and it needs to continue to work. Again, as I said, the science is all there. I understand there are a lot of big corporations that would like to keep dirty air in place because they can make a lot of money. But I urge you to stand up to them and vote in favor of our children. Our children and our future generations deserve the Clean Air Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If Arnold Sachs, if you're here, please come to the microphone. After Arnold Sachs, we have David Deremas and Fax Bar. Good day, ma'am.
I am Paula Waxman from the South Robertson Neighborhood Council. The South Robertson Neighborhood Council would like the city to reduce carbon emissions by, first, supporting actions to end the city's use of coal-fired power by 2020; second, by 2020 completely displacing LA's coal-fired power through aggressive energy efficiency programs and providing 40% of our power from clean renewable types of energy. The South Robertson Neighborhood Council joins over 20 other neighborhood councils in thanking the city for demonstrating its leadership in the area of carbon reduction. On a personal note, I laud this particular resolution, which supports implementation of the Clean Air Act on the EPA timeline and reduces carbon and mercury in the atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Give us your name.
Hello, my name is David Deremas. Climate change is now occurring at such an alarming rate that it's hard to track, the records being broken, the records and the destruction and ruin being laid upon this country by storms, floods, fires, droughts, and rising tides. Scientific analysis of being close to or at the tipping point are being published with greater frequency, warnings, with even more dire warnings as we continue to spiral deeper into a world of climate instability. And with CO2 now being measured in our atmosphere at over 400 parts per million, this will only get worse. This is no longer just an issue of science, economics, and politics. Global warming has become both the greatest challenge to and the most defining evaluation of man's morality. And the fate and humanity of nature lies in the balance. I ask you, the City Council, to take a bold stand and adopt the Clean Air Act resolution. Let LA become a leader in the fight to stop global warming. Let the people of this great city be seen as being willing, capable, to be good.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Fax Bar. I live and work in Councilmember Tom Laban's district. And I'm urging you to pass the, to support the EPA Clean Air Act resolution. I have three children. This is one of them. He's my middle kid. I believe it's our deepest responsibility to leave a livable planet for our kids. Supporting the EPA's mercury and air toxins standards is a critical step to unchaining LA from coal, a dirty 19th-century form of electricity. Sticking with it prevents us from building a dynamic and sustainable new energy, biz-friendly infrastructure for our great city. As the Supreme Court recently confirmed, the EPA is perfectly within its mandate to regulate emissions from coal-fired plants. And I urge you and the rest of the City Council to please vote in favor of the EPA Clean Air Act resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Alexis Soto, Dario Herrera, Skylar Borman, and Audra Walker, I believe. Good afternoon.
Hello, my name's Alexis Soto. I live and work in Echo Park in Councilmember Garcetti's district. I'm here as an activist with the Sierra Clubs Beyond Coal Campaign. I'm here to support the EPA Clean Air Act resolution. I urge the city council to be able to do the same. Coal is not only becoming increasingly expensive for ratepayers, but it's also an endangerment to public health. For the city council to move to work against the EPA's efforts to protect our public health is a move to protect a dirty and dangerous energy policy. We live in a city where we have one of the largest potentials for solar energy in the country. It would be foolish to be able to continue to support an industry that is an endangerment to that growing business and also to our public health. That move would be reckless and irresponsible. We're currently sending $477 million out of state when we could be using that money to be able to create jobs and clean energy and energy efficiency right here in our city and our state where we need it most. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker. Hi, young man. Pull the microphone down. Speak right into the mic. Good job.
Hello, my name is Dario Herrera. I'm a graduate of Alessandro Menchisco and I'm a constituent of Councilmember Reyes. I came here last year to implore you to get off of coal by 2020. We're a year closer to our goal and the EPA standards will help us get even closer. Please support the EPA's new carbon pollution standards. Thank you. And remember to get LA off of coal by 2020.
You did a great job. And it's good to hear from one of my bosses. Thank you so much.
Hi, how y'all doing today? My name is Skylar. I live in Hollywood and work there and work with the Sierra Club as an activist as well. I'm here to urge my councilmember, Mr. LeBonge, and the rest of the council as well to acknowledge the clear climate science and demonstrate foresight and responsible stewardship by joining us in support of the EPA Clean Air Act resolution. I'm going to live in this state for a long time yet. And I hope that during that time, California can continue to lead in energy efficiency and renewables rather than cause irreversible harm by staying with the outdated and destructive coal power that we use now. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Greetings, esteemed councilmembers. My name is Aura Walker. I am a concerned citizen, parent, and business owner from West Los Angeles. I believe that the future requires unification of resolutions inclusive with community and government cooperation. We must protect the Clean Air Act. In order to survive, we must prioritize protecting our land, air, and water. It is all about clean energy solutions using solar and hydrogen technology. We have had this technology for over 30 years. There's a lot of revenue to be made in clean energy conversion. And the answer is not switching from coal to another dangerous form of energy mining. As we know, mercury poisoning causes neurological autoimmune and brain damage. I eat a clean diet every day now and limit my fish intake as air pollution falls into our water and oceans. We have the opportunity to follow countries like Germany and Iceland who already have great success with clean energy conversions. But we need government subsidies for clean energy research and development. I am independently working with a solar hydrogen scientist to develop a way to neutralize carbon emissions through hydrogen technology. And he's interested in using landfill refuse as an energy resource. But we need your help and support.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Our next speakers is Kathy Seal, Destiny Vasquez, Felicia Bander, Kate Bandel. Come on up. If I call your name, come on up. Kathy Seal, Destiny Vasquez, Felicia Bander, and Kate Bandel.
Hi, my name is Kathy Seal. I'm with the Sierra Club Beyond Coal Campaign. And I'm here to thank all the councilmembers who are supporting this resolution and its opposition to any attempts to delay or weaken the EPA standards for mercury, toxic air, and carbon pollution. Why can we not delay? We need a sense of urgency for both for opposing global warming that threatens the food and water supplies to Los Angeles. And we also need this because of an issue that to me, as a mother, means quite a bit. And I'm echoing here the words of Jan Perry last week. We have two coal plants that supply the DWP with energy. They're burning coal and they're spewing mercury into the air, which then goes into lakes, streams, and oceans. Fish ingest it and then pregnant women are counseled to eat fish. They're eating mercury, which is a fetal neurotoxin. This harms the developing brains and spinal cords of children in the womb. We cannot let this continue any longer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for supporting the EPA Clean Air Act.
Good job.
Good afternoon, city councilmembers. My name is Destiny Vasquez. I am a graduate from Alessandro Menchisco. Thank you for allowing me to speak. When you talk about the future of our planet, I am the future. And I want a cleaner and more... sustainable future. Please support the EPA's stricter clean air standard. I made this poster for you to remind you to get off coal by 2020 when I'm 20 years old. Thank you for your time.
Councilmembers, we are at an extraordinary...
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Felicia Bander. I'm with the Sierra Club Beyond Coal Campaign.
Okay.
We are at an extraordinary point in time where we must reduce our greenhouse gas emissions or face potentially catastrophic consequences in climate, ecosystems, and species. Let Los Angeles lead by example. Please vote yes on the resolution in support of the EPA standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. It has been said that good managers...
Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Kate Bandel. I'm with the Sierra Club. It has been stated that good managers do everything right and that good leaders do all the right things. We know that from coal burning, what we observe is merely a filthy facade. We know that pernicious particulate matter, often invisible, insidiously infiltrates inspiration not only of human beings but also of other life in food chains and that it potentially kills. The byproducts of ambient mercury include chromosomal alterations, hormonal disruption, and fish unsafe to consume. We know that because of its potential toxicity, mercury is no longer used in thermometers, in blood pressure gauges, as a pharmaceutical preservative or for any other medical reason. How much more evidence does the city council need? The Sierra Club and its allies would, with enthusiasm and with joy, argue none. Please vote beyond coal. Please vote for the proposal. Please function as leaders. Please do the right thing.
Thank you. Now, did we... Did we call a Steve Fox? Kent Minault? And then we'll go to the valley for Lucy Garcia. Mr. Fox.
Thank you. My name is Steve Fox. I'm chair of the Green Team at Temple Isaiah in West Los Angeles. I'm not going to talk about the science. We're all familiar with the mercury poisoning. We're all familiar with the dangers of the greenhouse gases. What I do want to stress is that we're rapidly hurdling, absolutely hurdling, towards these tipping points. And frankly, it keeps me up at night. It's very difficult to think about. If you think about it, it'll keep you up at night, too. Just to give you an example of how fast we're hurdling, from the time I got out of college, which wasn't that long ago, you compare the fuel consumption and oil consumption of the world between then and now, and it uses eight times as much oil as it does now. When my dad was a kid, this is one generation back, one right brother was pushing the other right brother on a glider, not just a plane. So yes, what can we do? One of the problems we have with our congregants is that they say, what can I do? I have such limited power. Well, they will be stimulated. They will... They want to feel proud that their city is doing something. They want your leadership to show if you set the example, they will follow and they will do their part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Minault.
Hi, councilmembers. I'm Kent Minault. I live in Sherman Oaks. I want to thank my councilmember, Paul Corretts, for championing this resolution. The resolution has two parts, really. The first part is the air toxins and mercury standards. That's a final rule. That's settled law already, although supporting it is important. The second part, the carbon pollution standards rule, is a proposed rule. It's not yet been implemented into law. This second part is absolutely revolutionary. Europe totally regulates CO2. But this is the first time it's been proposed in the US. It's a change maker. It's a big step towards an economy that won't rely on burning things to create our energy. But while it's revolutionary, it's also firmly grounded in well-established law. The EPA is using authority that goes all the way back to the Clean Air Act of 1970, which passed with broad bipartisan support and authorized the development of comprehensive federal and state regulations to limit carbon emissions. This authority was challenged back in 2007 and subsequently reinforced by the Supreme Court, which ruled the EPA
Thank you.
could not side-seppit authority.
Thank you, sir.
Vote yes. Thank you.
Now, we're going to move to the valley for Lucy Garcia. Ms. Garcia, are you there? Going once? Okay. We'll return now to City Hall. Mr. Rosendahl is on the queue. Or did you want to speak first, Mr. Corretts? Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming. We should look at what Debbie's doing in Florida right now. Rain, rain, rain. We've had enough awareness of climate change going on. We know that the caps are melting. We know that the water is rising. This is insane for us not to get off of coal and get off of oil. We have to do it. We have to do it. This is a worldwide issue. I'm very upset to see down in Rio, 120 nations are meeting there. And they're not going to do much of anything at this point. Do we need any more warning about the perils of our planet and where it goes? When that young lady spoke, we want to leave this world a better place, not destroy it. So of course, we're 100% behind this. And we need to keep pushing and pushing. And frankly, we need to get this president or whatever president to realize the urgency is far beyond politics. It's the world at stake. So thank you for being here and speaking loudly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl. Give Bill another round of applause. He was riveting. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'm not sure it's fair for me to have to follow that one. But first, I want to acknowledge and thank all the folks who came out here today in support of Clean Air. Sierra Club's Beyond Coal Campaign, the Center for Biological Diversity, NRDC, religious leaders, some of our neighborhood council leaders, members of Scope and Lain and others that I might have missed. We appreciate your leadership and your support. I've introduced a substitute resolution with a few clarifications to make DWP more comfortable, which we are happy to do. That should be on everybody's desk. This resolution supports full implementation and enforcement This resolution supports full implementation and enforcement of two new EPA rules under the Clean Air Act. One, the Mercury and Air Toxic Standard for Power Plants, which addresses cleaning toxics out of existing fossil fuel power plants. Mercury poses a particular threat to children, pregnant women, fetuses, and it's estimated by the EPA, we will save as much as $90 billion annually in healthcare costs if this is fully implemented, including 11,000 lives saved each year, 4,700 heart attacks averted, 130,000 asthma attacks prevented, et cetera. And DWP expects to fully comply with this piece of it. The second rule sets carbon pollution standards for new power plants. And there was a groundbreaking climate change study that just came out last week that shows that LA is going to be dramatically impacted by climate change by 2050 if we're not able to turn things around. We expect to have triple the number of extremely hot days downtown. We expect to have highly increased temperatures in our mountains, which may impact our water supply and water availability. 2050 may seem like a long time, but it's not. It's a blink of an eye. Climate is changing, but we can affect the climate. We need to do whatever we can as fast as we can before it's too late. And the EPA's new carbon pollution standards rule is a great start. I ask you to join me in supporting both rules, supporting our EPA, supporting the Clean Air Act, which has already substantially improved Los Angeles, as we all know, as we remember the days of constant smog alerts and burning lungs. And we all can feel the improvement. We need to keep moving in the right direction. So, I ask for an eye vote on this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. Colleagues, it's a very timely vote. Right now, there's a conference in Mediterranean City, a conference on climate change adaptation sponsored by the Council for Watershed Health. We are speaking of how, in promoting adaptation and climate change, we can also create new markets. We can create jobs. We can find ways to move in an economic development strategy that reinforces all the goals that Congressman Caretz is supporting, hopefully this council unanimously. But it is a great opportunity to continue joining the world. We have Tel Aviv, the mayor of Tel Aviv, the mayor of Tijuana. You have the mayor from, I mean, representative of South Korea. So, it's an international effort, and they are all speaking to the notion of adaptation and climate change. So, thank you for this timely effort, Congressman Caretz.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. There are no additional speakers in the queue. We will prepare to vote. Mr. Clerk, did you need to make an announcement?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, council would first need to vote on whether or not to substitute Mr. Caretz's substitute motion, and that substitute motion, Caretz, weas our Alarcon, and then subsequently take a second vote on the matter.
Okay. At this time, we'll vote on the substitution. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Now, we'll vote on the actual motion.
That's substitute resolution 26, sir.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Congratulations. Okay, before we go, we still have work to do. Before we go to the next item, I would like to call on Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Krikorian, I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fourth with on number 12, please.
Fourth with on item 12. I'd like to call on Mr. Rosendahl for a very, very special
Adam, over here.
I'll get you, Paul. For a very, very special introduction and fourth with on this item as well, for Mr. Caretz. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a delight for me to welcome my niece, Linda Louise Rosendahl, her boyfriend, Henry. They're world travelers. He's from Finland. And Adam Hamilton, a member of my household, who are with me today. Like you to meet them all. Thank you, Mr. President, for that.
Is Adam the one that helps you with SWAM?
Yes. Adam is one of the caregivers now at the house. SWAM, as you know, is 86, and he's at the end of his life, and we give him 24-hour care with dignity at the home. And Adam is a blessing and works with my nephew, Chris Rosendahl, on taking care of him.
Anyway, Adam, it's a pleasure to, well, it's a pleasure to meet you all, but it's a pleasure to meet you. I was Bill's seatmate, and every day, he would give me updates on SWAM's condition and all of the things that you guys had to do. So, I appreciate you, as does Bill. All right. Let us take up item, anyway, Mr. Clerk, did you hear me when we sent Mr. Caretz's item forthwith?
Yes, sir. That's item 26.
Okay, good. And we did 12 for Mr. Krikorian?
Correct, sir.
All right. Now, we're gonna take up item 21, that was called "Special by Cards." Arnold Sacks, Dow House Dude, and then we'll go to the valley for Miriam Fogler. So, Arnold Sacks, I don't see him here. Mr. Dude, please come forward. Item 21.
Broken sidewalks, broken city, everything broken. I told you, I ride a bike, and I see the same potholes. They're just a little bit bigger every year. So, what are we doing with all that parking meter money? It's supposed to fix the streets, supposed to fix the sidewalks. And once again, I told you, I'm not here to complain. I am also an author, and I hope you read the materials that I give you. When I gave you my book, The United World of Free and Clear, I asked Mr. Alarcon, did you read it?
Stay on the
No.
issue.
No, it is the issue. The issue is housing.
The issue is
For everyone.
The issue is sidewalk repairs.
Yeah. It's part of housing. It's part of our city. It's part of our world. We need to have a better world. And my materials are designed to guide you into a different way of thinking about how we
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
Well, the sidewalks are broken. What else do you want to know? Big deal.
Okay. Stick to the
Fix them.
Stick to the sidewalk issue. Now, we go to the valley for Marion Fogler. Ms. Fogler? All right. She's not there. On this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for returning. Okay, now, we can take Mr. Reyes off the queue. Yeah, off the board and place Mr. Garcetti. Let's go with item nine, called "Special by Mr. Zine." And Mr. Zine, I have one card on that item, and that's Mr. Arnold Sacks.
He doesn't appear to be here.
He does not.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. This item will, controllers report, review of city commodities purchasing review and best price possible for the items. And what we found is 77% of the items reviewed paid less for 23%. So, the cost of 77%, which was more, we're talking $700,000, and the 23%, which was lower, $110,000. So, what we need to do is be more cognizant of the dollars we spend on items when we're looking at the city budget. So, what we wish to do with this is have the Department of General Services report on best practices that give the city the best price to meet the needs of our departments, and also request the controller to report on purchase cards used to purchase commodities, and instruct the CAO and GSD and City Attorney to review the local bid preference ordinance that we have, and instruct GSD to provide the city uniform cost comparison with LA County and other jurisdictions, and instruct GSD to determine the number of city commodity contracts in excess of 1 million, and to report in regard to potential savings that could be realized from switching from the city current cash-based uniform system to a voucher system with a vendor. And all those items are listed in the note and file report on item number nine. So, the bottom line is, when we're spending 77% more than what we could get the items for and 23% less, we need to modify that so we can save the precious dollars and buy the items that we need for the various departments. That is item number nine.
Okay. No speakers in the queue on this item. Can we open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Okay. The mayor has requested, Mr. City Clerk, that all items go forthwith to his office, like we did yesterday. So, all items will go forthwith to the mayor's office. That brings us to item 19. And that item was called "Special by Cards." Dina, gosh, I don't know if I can make out the last name. Dina Ebony, maybe?
Everly.
Okay. Followed by Julia Bradford, followed by Larry Gross.
My name is Dina Everly. I'm managing director of the Everly Company, and we provide the landlord outreach to landlords that are going through the LAHD REAP program. Just wanted to come introduce myself to you, kind people, and let you know what we do. What we do is we assist landlords that are going through REAP. We walk them through the process. We assist them with anything they need, from billing to their hearings to property site visits, to just understanding how the program works. And they have several outreach contractors, some are for the tenants, some are for the landlords, and the Everly Company is the only landlord outreach right now for LAHD. So, it's really important what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember you from this morning.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bradford, the two of you, we took an elevator ride together.
Yes, we did.
You'll be followed by Larry Gross, followed by Mr. Dude. Go on.
Okay. My name is Julia Bradford, and as Mrs. Everly stated, I am a landlord who has had a problem, and they have been magnificent in helping us get a multitude of problems resolved. Without them, I don't think we would be anywhere near completion. We would still be in the quandary. We have a long way to go, but we went so far in the last few weeks working with them that has culminated over two years. It's taken them less than three weeks to bring it to fruition so that we can complete something that's been stagnated for two and a half years. And I can't see us going anywhere without, thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Gross.
Larry Gross, Coalition for Economic Survival. The REAP program is a key program in ensuring that LA has safe, healthy, and livable housing. Along with SKEP, it places the city of Los Angeles in the national forefront of the fight against slum housing. This is something we should all be proud of and embrace. A key component of REAP are the outreach contracts. For both landlords and tenants, these contracts help ensure that their rights and responsibilities are upheld. Properties are spending less time in the program, and compliance is being obtained more rapidly. This is due in part to the success of these outreach contracts. Legitimate landlord groups understand the need for REAP outreach contracts and have stated so in letters to you all. In addition, these contracts have helped foster a degree of trust and cooperation among landlord and tenant groups on some of the issues that we've been battling on, and clearly, that's a good thing. Approval of these contracts will benefit LA's effective war on slum housing. We urge that you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. Dude.
Landlords and tenants, right up my alley. That's what I'm saying. We can change the system where you can still have the rich with the current system that we have, but you can have all the poor people being their own landlords and their own tenant. There is a way to do it. You just have to open your mind, step out of the box, blah, blah, blah. You know, all these cliches that you hear over here every day. But we are not really going for a permanent solution. The permanent solution is to let people all occupy every building that is empty. Let everybody have a home and let them maintain the place, and don't have an overseer over somebody else. The overseer is not going to like this, is not going to like that, and the one that is being overseen is not going to like what the landlord is saying either. That's why we have so many problems, and that's why we need so many lawyers, and that's why we need so much red tape. We don't need all that. We can change the way we do real estate, and that we will change the way we do the whole world. Thank you.
Thank you. No speakers on the queue for this item. If we could, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Zine, you're the cleanup hitter
All right.
today's council. We've got item 31, Mr. Clerk. And before you start, I just want to make sure I don't forget, yesterday, our sound guy, Ken, it was his birthday, right? Was it? Okay. And today, it's Officer Johnson's birthday. Where is he?
Wake up, Johnson.
Officer Johnson's birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Officer Johnson. Happy birthday to you.
And just so, in case you're interested, he's 137 years old.
He's younger than me.
So, that should strike fear in the hearts of the people that come to City Hall. Mr. Garcetti? Oh, I took your joke. We had the same joke writer. Okay. All right. Mr. Zine on item 31.
All right. Mr. President, this item, we contained from yesterday due to the timeframe, and what it comes out to, if you add up the numbers, the city of Los Angeles Housing Department, Public Works, LEDOT, and LA City Fire Department, after a board of review, they decided that they want to write off $164,447,843.60. And what they come up with this number, based upon invoices that have been sent, some to collection, some not, to the, from the various departments. And what puzzles me is the city has financial problems. The Stockton City Council yesterday, last night, voted for Chapter 9 bankruptcy. Vallejo already filed for bankruptcy. We've got a pressing financial situation, and I want to know why, in the situation of the Housing Department, Public Works, LEDOT, and Fire Department, those four places want to write off $164 million-plus dollars in this tough economic time. And basically, what I've determined is if you owe the city $5,000 or less, and they send you some notices, you don't pay it, well, some go to collection, some we just write off, and we got a total of $164 million that's outstanding to the people of Los Angeles that we're not collecting. So, we've got representatives here from the Housing Department, Public Works, LEDOT, and Fire Department, if you'll come forward, and find out how we're going to change the system, how we're going to make sure that people pay what they need to pay to the city of Los Angeles. Some of these situations, it was sent to collection, many of the situations, it was not even sent to collection, and how do we neglect collecting the money that people owe the city of Los Angeles, this type of write-off, $164,447,843.60? It is absolutely, to me, outrageous that we would want to write off that kind of money and not go after people for the dollars that they owe the city, whether we put it on their credit report, whether we send it to collection. But a number of these cases weren't even sent to collection, and we just kind of write it off. And when you add it up, $164 million. So, if you folks identify yourself to the department you're with, but again, it's Housing Department, Public Works, LEDOT, and LA City Fire Department, take it away.
Councilmember Todd Booley with the Office of Finance. And basically, what you have before you, these are write-offs that have accrued over many, many years.
Well, how many years? From '08 to '12?
Some of them, some of the write-offs that we've been seeing are significantly aged, and things that are out of statute are written off. Things that are out of statute generally aren't sent to collection. What we have here is basically a byproduct of not having written off amounts for years in the past, and there is a mandate right now for departments to follow executive directive and write off amounts deemed uncollectible, and so departments are following that. It's also consistent with the core recommendations that the city get to a more realistic collectible number. As you know, the outstanding balance of uncollected amounts is significantly high, and we are trying to get that to a number that is more realistic as to what is actually collectible.
You're missing the point. You're writing off the dollars that are due. Why aren't you finding a way to collect the money instead of writing off $164 million? So, we wipe the slate clean, but that's money that's supposed to come to the city for services that we provided, and just writing it off and say, okay, the book's clean. Meanwhile, we face financial disaster, as many cities around this country are facing. I'm not listening, or I'm not hearing what I think I need to hear, that you're going to go after people instead of writing off the dollars that are due. What are you going to do with that part?
The, I do believe the city is making a lot of progress in going after people for delinquent debt, and frankly, well, writing it off doesn't mean we can't collect it. We can still collect it. Writing it off is an accounting function to reflect what is a more realistic, collectible amount. But we do still continue to collect money on write-offs, but it's just very unlikely that we will.
Well, when I look at the fact that no social security number given in many cases, no driver's license information given in cases, just like the banks. The banks had a serious problem. They were giving loans called liar loans to people, and we had a huge problem with the foreclosures. If we don't get identification information from people they were given money to, then how are we going to track it down? And I was told by the Housing Department people, well, we don't get social security number, we don't get driver's license. How are we going to track these people down? What we need to do is come up with a plan. When we charge, we need to collect the money. But I find it outrageous when you start adding these dollars together, you've got over $164 million. I mean, that's a tremendous amount of money to say, well, we're going to just write it off, because Core says write it off, so now the slate's clean. That's not what we need to do for the people of Los Angeles. Housing Department, what does Housing Department say?
Mr. Zine, after this question, if you push your button again.
Go ahead.
Roya Babazadeh, Housing Department. Good afternoon. I want to mention that Housing Department has a very small portion of the dollar amount that you identify. In fact, it's $368,588 for write-off, and we have multiple venues that we follow to make our money. I want to make note that we take the collection of our revenue very important, and we give a priority to that because the administration of our programs are being paid by our revenue. We have very high collection rate. They have 93% and 94% for major original fees that we charge, and over 90% for all of our fees, original fees. There are properties that they are not paying us, and these are property owners. As long as they have property in Los Angeles, there is incentive for them to make the payment because we can follow them through their properties rather than the social security number. We have a small portion of the write-off that I believe is $33,000. You're making note of not going through the collection process, that these are property owners that sold their properties, and therefore, we didn't have the information for them to follow up. We buy the property owner information, historic information, try to find them, and we are successful to find many of them, as long as they have other properties in Los Angeles. But it's almost impossible not to have any write-off because of bankruptcies, because some of these property owners sell their property, leave the state, and we don't have a venue of pursuing those accounts. And we have reduced the collection, the accounts that are collectible drastically because we have several other additional venues of collection beside our collection agencies. And we also recently processed a transmitter to apply liens for some of these property owners' properties that they're not paying us timely.
Mr. Alarcon.
Mr. Zine is correct in taking on this issue, and I think he should continue to pursue it. And I've made my voice clear on this issue many, many times over the years, but in fairness, how many of these accounts receivable are in dispute?
Well, the accounts that we have in here, for those that we identified, four properties are the ones that are not referred to collections, but we are writing off because statute of limitation is passed, and as
That's not my question.
Yes.
And I don't have a lot of time, so I'd like you to get directly to my question, and that is, how many of the people that are alleged to owe this money to the city are disputing that fact and are fighting to get an amount reduced?
Well, if they are disputing
Can we start on the left, since that's where we started? This is the Fire Department?
No, I'm with the Office of Finance, but I don't know that detail as to the Housing Department. as to the Housing Department. I, I know they have a process for that.
Okay.
For the Housing Department, if they dispute our fees, we are not, uh, we hold their accounts, we suspend their accounts until we resolve the issue, and if it's resolved and they are supposed to pay us, and then they are delinquent, we run them through--
In other words, they are not in the accounts receivable?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, so, so, how do you, how do you, uh, is this normal? I mean, what is the, the total? If, if one hundred and sixty-four million is the amount that's uncollected, what was the original amount that, uh, that we're dealing with? Most collection agencies, you, they take a, a certain amount that they expect to be uncollected. Uh, how much, uh, how are we doing as compared to, um, other collecting, uh, organizations?
This, uh, this goes back, so, so a lot of these receivables go back, uh, a number of years, so it's difficult to say, um, offhand exactly what the overall collection rate was, um, relative to years past. Um, but we are, uh, right now, we have a, a data warehouse that we developed, and we are accruing this information from departments, and so we are starting to be able to get insight into collection rates. Um, the historical information, i- i- there's a lot of gaps in it, and so it is very difficult to, um, really assert that. Uh, I know, um, you know, for the Housing Department, they've identified off, I guess off the principle that they're collecting approximately ninety percent--
Do we have any indications of whether we're, we're collecting at a rate that is an industry standard, or whether we're below?
On behalf of Housing Department, we are above standards. Uh, we have exceptional rate of collections. We are proud of that. Uh, on behalf of other departments, one hundred and sixty-four is citywide.
And what, if, if he's saying we have gaps in how we analyze that, you seem so certain that, uh, that we're doing well. On what basis?
Well, I believe, uh, Mr. Booley is talking citywide for all the departments. I was just making reference to the Housing Department, and, uh, because the collection of our revenues have been, uh, priority for us, uh, especially during last five years.
I, I understand all that rhetoric. Uh, I'm, I'm asking about specific, uh, research and analysis. You're just saying you're doing great, that doesn't tell me, you're not telling me what your source is. All right, was there a study done? Was there recent, was there an investigation? Was there an audit? What are you basing your comment on?
Um, um, our study was citywide. We looked at the collection rate citywide.
But he's just saying they haven't, they've got a lot of holes in the, in the process.
Yeah, I think, I think where Housing is basically getting their information is from their own host system, and they have a relatively new system that was generated a couple of years ago, so they are looking at their own--
So are you suggesting they have a better, uh, view of their collection rates than you do?
Yes, they definitely do. They, they have a historical view from their, from their perspective.
Okay. And, and their, their, I would think their items are much, there's fewer items to analyze than in some departments where it's--
That, that's correct. For instance, most of this, uh, that's, um, at discussion right here is parking citations. I believe over a hundred million dollars of it is parking citations.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think there's a, a couple of issues here that Mr. Zine has raised. One is, what are our practices relating to collection of amounts that are owed to the city, number one. Number two, um, what actions should we be taking with regard to the matter that's now before us, which is writing off the accounts receivable that have become uncollectible? I think those are two separate issues. Uh, the first is an important one that we need to continue to have, uh, discussion about, that I think our departments need to continue to be vigilant about, to try to determine, uh, how we can improve on our practices to ensure that amounts don't become uncollectible in the first place. But I, I do need to note that what's before us today is, uh, a sum of money that has been found by the respective boards, um, to be uncollectible in any economic way. So this is not, I think it's important that the public understand as we discuss this. This is not a hundred and sixty million dollars of money that's being given away to deadbeats. This is money that has been, for the bulk of which, as I understand from the report, a collection notice was sent, uh, referred to collection agencies, I think in, with, in entirety with regard to parking tickets, it was entirely sent to collection agencies to collect, and that any further efforts to try to collect this money would likely cost more than we would receive in the city. So this is a, the, the writing off of these amounts is a simple matter of good accounting and good bookkeeping. It's not a question of, 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 you know, leaving money on the table. Going forward, changing our practices is another issue. Uh, there, there's certainly much more that we can do and should do to prevent these, uh, amounts from accruing as unpaid in the first place. And some of these that we're considering today, some of these debts are over ten years old. And what's the statute of limitations on collections on items like this?
It, it varies, but generally, you're looking at three to four, maybe five years in some cases, but--
So for at least five years, some of these debts have been legally uncollectible, and yet we still continue to carry them on our books. So it, it adds to this myth that there are hundreds of millions of dollars out there that we're just not picking up. Well, that's not true. Most of this money, the vast majority of this money, is either legally uncollectible, uh, or for all practical purposes, for all economic purposes, it's not cost-effective to continue to pursue it, because it would cost the city more than it would take us to collect. Now, we should never have gotten into this position in the first place. We should never have allowed this much money to accrue on the books. Good accounting practices would have involved having a system in place so that amounts that are deemed uncollectible are written off on a timely basis. That's what every corporation in America does, that's what, you know, public agencies that are practice, following good accounting practices should do, that's what we should do. So I think the matter before us today, as it was heard in Budget and Finance, uh, and as it's, um, before you today, is a simply, a simple matter of whether we agree that as a matter of good accounting practices, our books should reflect reality. And that's what we're trying to do here with this recommendation. Now, going forward, I, I, I strongly encourage that we continue to pursue the questions that Mr. Zine is asking about how we do a better job of making sure that we collect ma-, uh, items. How do we get systems in place so that they don't accrue in the first place? What's the most cost-effective way to use technology, to use our own resources, to use our city attorney's resources, to use our Department of Finance's resources to ensure that we pursue every dollar that's owed to this city? Because as long as we're facing deficits in the hundreds of millions of dollars, obviously, we can't leave a single penny on the table. We can't leave a penny that could be collected, uh, we can't let it go uncollected. So we have to continue to make that effort. Um, but, but with respect, that's not what's before us today. What's before us today is whether the amounts that are uncollectible should continue to stay on our books and create a false impression that there's a chance that we might get this money, uh, or whether our books should reflect reality, and whether we should follow good accounting practices by writing this amount off.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Zine, um, maybe we should go forward with this item, but add an instruction that the reorganization of how we do this, how we determine what's uncollectible, and a lot of the things that you raise concerns about, we would add an instruction that they would then go back to your committee and report on all of these things.
Well, one of the concerns I have, uh, Mr. President, is that these are five thousand dollars and less. Now, there are, I'm sure, cases that they owe us more than five thousand dollars, so this tune of one hundred and sixty-four million would even be higher. I understand my colleagues' comments on it. My concern is that we project our budget, revenue projections, that we're going to generate so much money in different services. Well, obviously, we're short, but we're not collecting. But this is five thousand and less. The dollar value of five thousand more, we do not know. What I'd like to do with your indulgence, Mr. President, colleagues, is to take this matter to Audit, uh, Audit and Government Efficiency Committee and find out, these are only the departments, Housing, Public Works, D O T and Fire. We don't have the other departments listed. I think we need to do a comprehensive, and I'll be more than happy to do it in the committee, and then figure out exactly, and if we have to write it off, we have to write it off, but be honest with everyone and not put false projections out there, and find out why, for example, Housing Department, ten thousand cases, we never even sent it to collection. There's a lot of other issues that I don't really have the time to discuss with the limit. So I, if it would be indulgence, I would be more than happy to take the whole kit and caboodle to Audit and Government Efficiency, come up with, and then bring it back, and iron out what we need to iron out, from all the departments and our collections, and how we improve collections, and if ultimately we write this off. But let's get a true evaluation of how much is out there, because I've heard these numbers floating around, and then when I only hear five thousand and less, how many cases are out there five thousand or more that we haven't collected? So there, there may be, I, I hate to think of how much money is not being collected, and we're not following up on it.
Okay, Mr. Zine, I'm going to, uh, call on the Chair of Budget and Finance in a, in a moment, but I believe that there's a way that we can accomplish what you want to accomplish and still move forward, because the thing that is harmful to the city is to carry this debt on the books when it really is not real debt.
And I think the debt's greater than this. I think the debt's greater than this, because there's other departments that we don't have the numbers for, and that's what I think we need to do, is come up with a true reflection of exactly what it is and clean it off once and for all.
So anyway, I'm trying to come up with a Solomon-esque way to deal with this, and it, it appears as though I'm failing. Maybe, Mr. Krikorian, you can, uh, I put the plane up in the air, maybe you can land it.
Well, let, let me just ask this question of departmental staff. I, I don't have any, uh, objection to Mr. Zine exploring this area of questioning in, in his committee. I, I think that's appropriate. I would, I'd only be concerned, uh, if there's a matter of timing or reporting requirement that would be relevant to, uh, any issue that I'm not considering, but given the fact that some of these accounts receivable are over ten years old, I doubt that this is so time-sensitive that there would be a problem in sending it to Mr. Zine's committee, or, or is there that I'm not thinking of?
Um, so the, uh, the, the item, just to, just to clarify, is, um, the only item before the council, uh, right now in terms of, in, in terms of vote, is the, uh, housing i- housing amounts approximately--
Yesterday, we had, uh, the report, which I have a copy of, item eight, was the Housing Department, Public Works, D O T and L A F D.
Yeah.
Today, we only have the, the Housing folks here, but this, this is so fragmented, I think we need to do is a comprehensive, put it all together, a nice, compact package, bring it to, uh, the council, a- and get those other departments. I mean, how much is still lingering out there from other departments that the city operates?
I, I agree. We can help you get to that. I, I think what, what I was trying to say was the, the only item for vote is the, is the housing items. The other items have already been written off, uh, by the Board of Review. They were the under five thousand, so the over five thousand are the amounts that come to the council. And so you have the entire Board of Review report, um, but only the over five thousand is coming to council for approval. Um, now, in terms of, uh, we can certainly, we have information on, on write-offs that we can show, uh, historically what has occurred in write-offs. Uh, a lot of it, most of it, has happened this past fiscal year. Uh, a lot of that has to do with the city kind of moving down this path of trying to, you know, clean up the books and get to a better idea as to what is collectible versus uncollectible. And, uh, and I, I do think that it, it does sound like it's very merited to have a, a conversation, a report on what methodologies does the city employ citywide, department to department, and centrally on collections efforts? What tools do we use? Um, how do we do it, department by department? And, uh, and then try to evaluate from there, what are the best practices, uh, that we can engage?
Mr. Krikorian.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Just, just so that I can clarify, members, excuse me, the council file that's before you is a Budget and Finance Committee report with two recommendations, and that's to approve two, uh, Board of Review recommendations to authorize the, uh, removal from active accounts of, um, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars from L A H, L A H D books. Those are the two recommendations that are before you for a vote. Attached to that council file is the underlying staff report that includes a broader discussion about accounts receivable, collections and write-offs. So I think, Mr. President, if I can get to where you, you're trying to get to, we can go ahead today and act on the Budget and Finance Committee's report with those two recommendations, by the way, none of which involve the under five thousand dollars amounts. These are all invoices that are over five thousand dollars. The report references the lower ones, so we can refer that underlying report, uh, to Mr. Zine's committee for further analysis and review, and we can go ahead and act on the two items that are, as part of the Budget and Finance Committee recommendations today, which are simply those two items.
I got you. Mr. City Attorney, and then Mr. Zine, I'll go to you.
That's fine.
You, you needed to make a statement? That, we're fine. Okay, um, are you comfortable--
That's fine, that's fine.
--with that? So then the vote would be to move on these two items?
So, so, Mr. President, I would ask, uh, colleagues, I would ask that you, uh, approve the recommendations that are contained in the Budget and Finance Committee report, and I would go ahead and, and move that we refer further, refer for further consideration the underlying staff report regarding accounts receivable collection, uh, to Mr. Zine's committee for further analysis.
From, from all departments, not just those listed, all departments.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, so that will be the order. Correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, so there's no additional speakers in the queue, so on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, where does that bring us on today's agenda? And again, this is forthwith. Every item we've acted on today will be sent forthwith.
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members. Mr. Buscaino.
President, thank you, sir. I want to, uh, announce this Friday, it's going to be a great day in the Port of Los Angeles, and welcome everyone in the city to visit, um, and, uh, the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Crafted at ten-thirty. The doors open at eleven, set to bring in thousands of people on the weekends at the Port of Los Angeles. Warehouse is nine and ten. Actually, the, the warehouse, ten, will open first, and for more information, visit our website, C D, sorry, L A one-five-T-H dot com. And also, Friday night, the Port of Los Angeles is hosting its annual Cars and Stripes event, um, down at the, um, the water, the water, Dancing Water Fountain, um, and it will conclude with a, a fireworks show at nine-twenty. And on Saturday, join me at the Watts Men's Health Fair, uh, and also the Ninth Annual Women's of Watts Peace March at one-oh-third in Compton at noon on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, for those of you preparing for the weekend and thinking about Fourth of July, Council District Fourteen has three fireworks shows this weekend. On Saturday, at Hollenbeck Park in Bull Heights, we have a concert and fireworks show. The concert begins early afternoon, and the fireworks about eight, eight-thirty. Same day, Saturday, June thirtieth, in Bull, in El Sereno, at El Sereno Park, uh, we have a fireworks show about eight or eight-thirty, and we have a parade in El Sereno that begins at one-thirty. And on Sunday, uh, we have a Fourth of July fireworks show on July first, celebrating our country's independence at Eagle Rock Park. Three fireworks shows in Council District Fourteen this weekend.
Okay, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Friday, this coming Friday, we are going to have the VIP reception ceremony to celebrate the grand opening of the Metro Orange Line down Conoga Avenue, and, uh, that is going to connect the Orange Line into the Red Line, and that will take place this coming Friday, nine AM. The Orange Line, and there will be, uh, opportunities for the public to participate in free rides, uh, more to be announced in the media on that. Also, on Saturday at nine AM, Fallen Heroes Memorial Motorcycle Ride, and that's going to start at Fire Station Eighty-four, two-one-zero-five-zero Burbank Boulevard with the L A City Fire Department. And also at ten o'clock on Saturday, Metro Orange Line, Conoga Park Station, grand opening. Again, there in the great community of the San Fernando Valley, and I think, Mr. President--
Yes.
That is it.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Members, other announcements? Okay, could if I, if I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise. Adjourning motions, members. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I ask that we adjourn-- And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Jenny Martorana. Jenny passed away Saturday, June 16th, of complications due to a stroke. She was born October 22nd, 1923, in Chicago, Illinois. Like many women, she helped during the World War II effort for our country. And at age 26, she married Sam Martorana. In 1954, with her first son in tow, they left Chicago and headed to Los Angeles. Along with Sam, she opened Casa Bianca, an Italian family restaurant in Egorock that is known by many, and there is often a way to taste their great Italian cooking. They opened that in January 1955. Jenny was a people person and loved to talk politics. Her greatest pleasure was having her family and friends over while she prepared a delicious dinner. She is survived by her son Ned, daughter Andrea, grandson Jordan, and granddaughter Lindsay. Funeral services were held Thursday, June 21st, at the Egorock Baptist Church, and I know she will be missed by many in the northeast Los Angeles community. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Gad Beck, who passed away in Berlin on June 24th, just six days before what would have been his 89th birthday. He is believed to be the last-known gay Jewish Holocaust survivor. He was also a resistance fighter during World War II. After joining an underground Zionist resistance youth group, he played a key role in securing the survival of Jews in Berlin. At one point, Beck even donned a Hitler youth uniform in order to surreptitiously enter a deportation center and rescue a Jew held captive there. Shortly before the end of the war in 1945, he was betrayed by a Gestapo spy and held temporarily in a Jewish transit camp in Berlin. He was liberated thanks to the defeat of Nazi Germany. According to the Jerusalem Post, he then became a pioneering gay activist and educator. He fearlessly took on a severely anti-gay and repressive post-World War II German society while continuing his Zionist work in helping Jewish survivors to immigrate to Palestine. He himself went there in 1947 and stayed until 1979. Upon his return to Germany, he was appointed Director of the Jewish Adult Education Center in Berlin. He would also attend the Christopher Street Day Parade for Gay Pride in Berlin and wave an Israeli flag. He was featured in the film The Life of Gad Beck and in the documentary Paragraph 175, which is named after the part of the German penal code that outlawed homosexuality. Speaking about his life as a gay Jew, Beck would say, "God doesn't punish for a life of love." Beck is survived by his partner of 35 years, Julius Laffer.
Okay. In fact, all members would be, I think, appropriate. Any other adjourning motions? Okay, we have a last-minute announcement by Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow, with the World Cup, the European Cup, that is, Italy will be playing Germany 11:30. So Mr. Garcetti and I have a friendly wager to Mr. Rosenthal that if whoever team wins, will be able to wear the respective jersey. So if, the wager is, if Italy wins, Mr. Rosenthal will wear an Italian jersey. And if the Germans win, Mr. Garcetti and I will wear a Germany jersey.
All right.
All right? Fair enough?
And I might add that it looks like the Germans are going to win.
Yeah, you know what? The Italians are the underdogs, but as I know, I know what it's like to be an underdog.
All right.
Members, this council meeting is adjourned.